Hi, everybody. It is 6:34 and we will get started with the regular meeting of the East Bay Charter Township Board. And with calling the meeting to the order, if you'll join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Anne, would you do a roll call attendance, please?
Sure. Bartlett.
Yes.
Lyle.
Here.
M. Cortaid.
Here.
Matt Cook.
Here.
S. Cortaid.
Here.
Noted that Walters is absent and excused.
Okay, agenda. Review for conflict of interest. The Board will notice on our agenda tonight, on the consent agenda, we have just standard minutes and an updated ACH, and then site plan review, special use for GOREC planned unit development. Does any member of the Board have any conflict to declare? Okay, seeing none, we'll move for an approval of the agenda if there's a motion.
And make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Or...
Okay, motion by Bartlett and supported by Lyle. Further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have an agenda. Okay, with that, we are on to public comment. And there are two opportunities for public comment. The first opportunity is now, at the beginning of the meeting, as is always, and the second opportunity is at the end of the agenda, as is always. The public hearing and comment period for the GOREC application was held on May 9th, and that public hearing is closed. At meetings, the first opportunity for public comment is routinely for anything an individual would like to comment on, except an agenda item specifically offering time for public comment or hearing. Since tonight's agenda item does not have public comment or hearing time, as it was previously offered, any comments offered during the first agenda item related to GOREC must only, I'm sorry, any comments offered during the first public comment related to GOREC must only pertain to the new application materials provided by the applicant, and should not restate any public comment offered previously at another meeting or any email material provided to the Board. Public comment, as you will hear, is limited to three minutes, and the Board appreciates input. However, when you are signaled that your time has passed, you must end your comment and give other community members the same opportunity or the Board the ability to proceed with the meeting. With that, the Recording Secretary Anne Wendling will read the public comment guidelines.
The purpose of the public comment is to give members of the public an opportunity to express their views and opinions to the members of this Board. To maintain order and ensure fairness to every speaker, the following rules must be followed during public comment. Speakers will approach the podium and introduce themselves by stating their name and address, and then proceed to make their comment. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and is only allowed to speak once on the same matter. Communication previously emailed to the Commission is not necessarily, is not necessary to be read aloud. Public comment time may not be given to another member of the public. Any arrangement for speaking on behalf of others must be arranged prior to the meeting. When your time is at 2:30, you will be alerted with a yellow signal to wrap up your comment, and at 3 minutes, you will be alerted with a red signal, and the Chair will ask you to conclude your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will open it up for public comment. And if you would like to make public comment according to those guidelines, please step up to the podium. If you would like to make public comment and someone is making public comment, please make your way up behind them, stand a few feet apart, and wait there. We'll keep that going. We don't want to wait for people to have to cross the room. It's a busy meeting, and so we want to be pretty timely with, be efficient with our time. So if there is public comment, please make your way to the podium. Hello, how are you? Could you introduce yourself, please?
I am Patricia Gorgak, 5820 Renton Road. My comments tonight are brief. I'd like to be certain that all trustees are aware that GORC has been asked if they will be making any accommodations for disabled people. We have all heard the impetus and the inclusion that their mission, of their mission, this is their mission. GORC has responded, and no current or future plans accommodate physically or mentally disabled people. That doesn't sound consistent with their mission to me. I am not alone in feeling this.
Okay. Now can you hear me? That doesn't sound consistent with their mission to me. I am not alone in feeling this being exclusionary. GORC is not deserving of any approval this evening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. The next for public comment, please. Hello, Josh, and we had emailed in, there was an arrangement earlier that you were utilizing two individuals' time as well. So Josh will be slated for nine minutes at the max. Could you introduce yourself, too?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. Good evening. Josh Sloot, 1482 Woods and Waters. In the time following the Planning Commission's approval of this atrocity of an application, there's been a lot of thoughtful dialogue on the part of the township in the interest of defending the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of East Bay. This is your sworn duty as an elected representative. When it's come to things like rejecting the smaller scoped Raymond Farms wedding venue or putting a moratorium on STRs before they overwhelm our neighborhoods, you have respectably fulfilled your commission. You are once again faced with a decision that pits the profits of deep-pocketed special interests against the backyard burden that will be shouldered by your constituents. The only difference tonight is that it should be even easier to do the right thing. Matter of fact, I'm not sure what kind of mental gymnastics would be required to approve it. Saying no is easy. You simply have to follow our laws. Approval requires something else entirely. Our laws is defined in the many layers, including the ordinance master plan, future land use map, and the nationally respected Forest Lakes overlay. All clearly state that you must say no. To highlight just a few, Section 636 of the ordinance says that approved applications must be self-contained and not have any, any adverse economic, social, or environmental impact. We have demonstrated that there will be many adverse effects, and they are anything but self-contained, emanating well past GORC property lines and into our water, air, and our roads. Section 602 says each of the following, approved applications must be consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance. The requested uses are neither. Approved applications must be compatible with adjacent uses of land in the natural environment. As we have demonstrated, the scale and intensity of this request is beyond incompatible. It is a direct threat to the use of adjacent land and its natural environment. Approved applications must meet each of eight special land use standards. This application loudly fails six of eight. Section 601 of our ordinance clearly states, in no uncertain terms, if the facts regarding the special land use do not establish by preponderance of the evidence that the standards and requirements can and will be met, the township must deny the application. We've seen a lot of bad science and half-truths used to justify conclusions, but nothing remotely approaching evidence, let alone a preponderance of it. Our ordinance compelled an environmental assessment. Sorry, one second. Speaking of evidence, let's look at the basis for your decision. Our ordinance compelled an environmental assessment, and what we got was a passing glance from a firm that self-admits to not be an environmental review firm. In response to 20-year-old traffic data in a one-way study, you asked for a proper traffic study and information on road conditions. You got intersection crash history from a time when the property was barely used. In response to a sound analysis from a party equipment rental salesman, you requested a proper sound study. What you got was incomplete, unrealistic, and skewed analysis. You don't have to take my word for it. We hired one of the most credentialed sound engineers in the state to do a peer review. I hope you had a chance to read the review and watch the video. The background baseline they hang their conclusions on to offset the chicken dance is artificially exaggerated by four to eight X and improperly measured. The simulated sound tests occur under unrealistic parameters, including time of day, weather, and music muffled at two to four X, lower than the average standard DJ. The study ignores the frequency and time-varying nature of sounds involved, both of which greatly affect the perceptibility of sound and background noise. The analysis also ignores perception past the property line, the omnidirectional nature of bass, and the quadrupling effect of sound over water. Translation, turning the speakers around won't cut it. This is a study that should not have made it past internal review, let alone be presented to you as the basis for this decision. The only thing this study proves is that the applicant is incapable of submitting data that holds up to any scrutiny. And what of the reliability of the information submitted by the revered applicant in the process itself? This very honest email from Assistant Chief and Fire Marshal Brian Belcher to the Planning Department tells you everything. Assistant Chief Belcher states, and I quote, "My email has created a big stir, as they don't want to spend money for proper drawings, and are saying this is just a formality with the township, and that nothing is changing with the uses of the property. Holding a wedding with 300 cars that could impact fire lane access is certainly a change, and something we never had to worry about with a drop-off Boy Scout camp. They are totally trying to circumvent the process and asking us to just sign off." End quote. Just a formality with the township? Totally trying to circumvent the process? I think that pretty much sums up how they view this entire thing. An organization trying to misuse its influence and privilege to get a separate path through our process, so they can obtain special exceptions to our laws. And what about the planning review that's in front of you right now? The document you depend on more than any other? You know, the one that says the 70 events with over 300 people is, quote, "some limited additional use"? And makes absurd claims about adverse effects because buildings are supposedly interior to the site and buffered from neighbors, when the main venue sits unbuffered on a hilltop facing a lake? It's hard to explain until you consider the fact that the applicant has a board member who's also a partner at the firm our township paid to do the review. Some have called this conjecture. Others might call it a conflict of interest. The individual in question participated in meetings with the applicant in the township is on countless email threads involving the application, and his name can be found in the metadata on the packet in your binders. Regardless of what we call it, the applicant's the reviewer. Should any of us be okay with this kind of influence? Under what other set of circumstances should we allow an applicant to be this involved in their own approval process? Even regardless of intent, how could a fair and objective result ever be possible? And then there's the Planning Commission that made the recommendation. This was a very young Planning Commission.
Josh, you need to tailor your comments to the new materials presented. You're talking right now about the content of the Planning Commission.
Sure. In our conversation, Beth, you just said as long as that had not been stated previously in a video, in an email, or in comments.
Nope. What I said is that it needs to be on the new materials presented. Your other material on the sound study is. So please continue.
Okay, but that's not what was stated in our, in our exchange. If you'd just let me finish, I'm very close to wrapping up. This was a very young Planning Commission with new members and other key planning personnel on leave. Commissioners communicated repeatedly that they were overwhelmed by the materials, pleading for something like a Cliff Notes version to understand it all. The Cliff Notes never came, but a decision did. How can you square this other than to conclude they simply wanted out from underneath it? And too hot of a potato with the rotary involved threw it all to you for a much-needed lifeline. This process has been tilted. The facts don't support the conclusions. And all of the local laws that you have to base this decision on say that a commercial event center in the Forest Lakes is no more appropriate than weddings at Raymond Farms, STRs overwhelming our neighborhoods, or say even cruise ships in Grand Traverse Bay? No one applying and no one deciding has to live with the consequences. The camps and services director doesn't live on the lake. He doesn't even live in this township. The GORC director doesn't even live in this county. None of the consultants, employees, or decision-makers in the township will have to contend with the drunk drivers, overcrowded lake, AIS infestations, or amplified music destroying the peace of the few nice weekends we get up here. But I ask that you at least put yourselves in our shoes. You've been bombarded with a lot of information, but this decision is much simpler than the hundreds of pages of documents, volumes of correspondence, websites, social media posts, local TV and newspaper spots, and a year's worth of meetings would have you believe. You've been elected to uphold our laws and represent the tax-paying residents of this township, not to carve holes in our laws for special interests who don't even pay taxes here. A vote to approve this application would be a great disservice to current and future residents of this township, to their way of life, and to the precious natural resources they seek to protect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next for public comment, please. So let me go ahead, Mr. Dukowski, for one quick second and get out of the way some verbiage that I had for prior to the agenda item, because it's pertinent here, too. And that is that attendees must refrain from any outward expression. Outward expressions create a distraction that makes it difficult for us to hear, and it keeps the process going. So we are happy to listen to you and to let the public that's watching let us listen to you. Mr. Dukowski, go ahead.
Should I reintroduce myself?
You may.
Matt Dukowski, 1464 Woods and Waters Trail. I know that most of you know that what the rotary has proposed is close to 100% welcome. The rotary has done so much for our community, and how can anyone think they could do wrong? That said, I feel bullied. We've been told that so many things have been conceded to to attempt to placate the property owners of Rennie Lake. I felt bullied when it was stated that they were conceding the shooting range. Hiking, camping, disc golf were never going to be compatible with the shooting range. I felt bullied when they claimed to make concessions on the number of guests who would attend certain events. Not out of a desire to meet in the middle, but because they were told by Metro that the facility could not hold that many people and that the drain field couldn't accommodate. I feel bullied when the best we can do is a commitment to only allow up to 60 watercraft from GORC on the lake at one time, when the busiest day of the entire season is the 4th of July, and the lakefront owners and the lakefront owners have a pontoon boat parade that has never exceeded 30. As a matter of fact, 27 has been the most, and only during the parade. I feel bullied when a 20-year-old traffic study that was done from one way only is determined to be satisfactory. The roads are extremely narrow, curvy, and without bike lanes. The risk to the lives of your residents is extreme. I feel misled when events, because they don't start or finish at GORC, don't need permission, even though the PUD hasn't been approved. The same goes for permission to do weddings on consecutive weekends. Two items requested by the trustees, a real traffic study and a sound study done by a certified professional were to be in by August 25th. These materials were not made available to the public until late September 1st. Was this done not to allow the public time to study? Why has there been so little discussion among the township around water quality and boat safety? Why has there never been a lake capacity study done? How about the fact that we currently have no invasive species in Rennie Lake? Even our precious blue-ribbon Borden River now has river snot in it. But Rotary has agreed to put in a boat washing station with no one to ensure it's used and no one to be responsible for the campers. Why is it that no one can articulate the staffing plan? Has anyone asked our already stretched-thin local deputy if they are prepared to handle rowdy campers when GORC's interns don't rise to the occasion? Why no insistence on a true environmental assessment at least the smaller amount of acreage surrounding the campgrounds, event buildings, and well sites? The bottomless vault toilets and inadequate drain fields were only discovered by accident. Would we hold any other developers to these weak standards? We live forever with this decision. Please don't you feel bullied. Just say no.
Thank you, sir. And just for those, as a reminder, the new materials that were presented have to do with the issue on the road, it's Scout Camp Road and Hubs Highway, the drainage, the parking designation and sufficiency, Besser Hall occupancy, the sound and noise study and historical use. So just, so you can, before you speak, tailor your comment to those new materials. How are you? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Judy Pelto, 2100 Abbey Lane, East Bay Township. I appreciate the opportunity to address the Board on this important issue. I know all the Board members are very aware this PUD is a major concern among residents of East Bay Township. Many, many residents have attended every meeting involving the GORC PUD, and the Planning Commission, hats off, has been very patient in letting residents participate in these meetings. This is how a working, or excuse me, this is how a working democracy functions. Many people who are in favor of or involved in requesting this PUD as currently written are not residents of East Bay Township. Approving this PUD will set a major precedent and have far-reaching consequences for the township and its residents. I have confidence the Board of Trustees, who represent the taxpayers of East Bay, will make a decision that best reflects the vision in the draft master plan and is in the best interest of the residents of East Bay who pay the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, please. Hello, ma'am. Could you introduce yourself?
Jill Plumeteer, 1387 Hubs Highway South. Two things I wanted to bring attention to. One was a letter I found in the agenda packet from Ryan Walsh from Grand Traverse County Twin Lakes Park to yourself regarding noise complaints, no complaints from the neighbors. And I didn't think that was a fair comparison of that area to the GORC area. I used to live over on North Long Lake Road. Drove by that for almost 20 years. And there's one house on that lake. There's another house that's across the woods through there. And then on the other side is a farm. If you go across the street to the south Twin Lakes, there's three houses on that lake. So it's not a good comparison for noise complaints. And it's also on a very busy road. North Long Lake Road is a main filth wall. It is not south Hubs Highway. So it's totally not a good comparison when I look at it. And so I felt that that just wasn't a good comparison for noise complaints or complaints about road comparisons. The second is my property backs up to the Adirondacks camp. And there's an emergency plan for that, for ATVs or snowmobiles to get back there for emergencies. And I think of a wildfire breaking out. And right next to me, I have another houses. And I don't think an ATV or snowmobile is going to put that wildfire out. So I say no to the PUD.
Thank you. Hello, can you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. I'm Patricia Bednires. I live at 1380 Autumn Trail. I am a nurse. I've worked with children and families for 45 years. I've lived up here almost five years and have grown to enjoy this environment and appreciate it. So I wanted to share three principles that I use as a nurse that I get from our public health friends. And that's protect, promote, and prevent. So tonight, I'm urging you to protect our environment by not deviating from some of the guidelines and policies that you have. Prevent any harm to our environment, as Josh so clearly stated earlier. And then do everything you can to promote the health of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Next. Hello, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, Casey Cowell, Shumsky Road, Traverse City, 2506. I have deep ties to northern Michigan. I have witnessed the transformation of the Grand Traverse region. I'm sure we agree, some outcomes have been good and some not so good. For over three decades, I have dedicated philanthropic support and personal engagement on three themes: positive, sustainable, long-term economic development, population healthfulness, protection and conservation of our natural resources. And it is really working. You can see it all around. For example, our efforts have inspired our Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy to include significant new elements in their strategic plan. They now focus on individual health and well-being, ecologically engaged and informed communities. A 10-year giving program is inspiring our conservancy to focus access to its vast resources to engage our population in healthful, lifelong activities and education. A current example is right here in East Bay Township. With your participation and support, ownership of Turtle Cove on Arbutus Lake is being gifted to our conservancy and for exactly these purposes. This encompasses almost a mile of pristine Arbutus Lake frontage and over 120 acres of land. There will be healthful educational hikes on Turtle Cove. This is a huge win for our greater community, particularly because the stewardship of our conservancy is consistent with the environmental setting in our community. Let's talk about what is on the table here and now. Rotary's GORC game plan and expansive PUD are dangerous and significant areas. For example, late-night events, loud events, increased transient watercraft, bringing in who knows what. The overreach in these areas will have significant negative impact. These have all been discussed and are well-known. You are in the driver's seat. It is time for you to slam on the brakes. You are aware of the recent news on the appearance of Didymo rock snot and algae blooms right here in our backyard. The Borden River just below the Shumsky Road canoe launch is the third location for Didymo in Michigan. This has appeared here since your last review meeting. GORC plans to significantly increase lake access for transient watercraft. This is a bad time to expand such access. Not enough is known. Once invasive species are in our pristine waters, the damage is done, and it is extremely difficult, expensive, and complicated to correct. As our elected officials, you must make the tough decisions. Rotary is always well-intentioned, but GORC is overreaching and misguided. Keep Rennie Lake pristine. Don't send out an invite to America to have their weddings at Besser Lodge. Keep East Bay Township and the Forest Lakes area special. Please vote against this PUD.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Next. Jill, I'm again going to remind people to keep comments, because a couple of the last ones have deviated a little bit. They have had some themes to some new things. But again, the new items presented, specifically for GORC, were issues with the roads that Wade Trim presented. Parking sufficiency, Besser Hall capacity, sound and noise, and historical use, as well that memo wasn't there that the lady previously... historical use, as well that memo wasn't there that the lady previously referenced regarding Twin Lakes.
Is that picture one?
No, sir. You're out of order. Go ahead, Jill.
Good evening. I'm Jill Bernardi. I'm the president of Safe Forest Lakes and also resident on Rennie Lake, on Rennie View Drive. I'd like to read a letter dated September 12th. Dear Board of Trustees, we are writing to you regarding the GOREC planned unit development application. We represent the undersigned organizations that are dedicated to the preservation and protection of the Forest Lakes area. Our groups and communities are united in our request to you to deny the GOREC PUD. Simply stated, we believe the PUD is inconsistent with both the letter and intent of our zoning plans and laws and will erode the health, safety, and welfare of East Bay Township residents. In addition, based on the recent document Principles of Evidence, zoning enforcement issued by the township attorney, we also believe enforcement will be known, which would add further threats to the health, safety, and welfare of all and danger, endanger our natural resources. Thank you for your service to all the residents of East Bay Township and for listening to us. We know the trustee position you hold is challenging, one you take seriously, and that you have the best interests of the township at heart. Please help us preserve and protect the Forest Lakes by rejecting the PUD application. Sincerely, the Board of Directors of the following organizations: Arbutus Lake Association, Board of Directors; Protect Forest Lakes, Board of Directors; Safe Forest Lakes, Board of Directors; Spider Lake Property Owners Association, Board of Directors; the Rennie Lake Association, Board of Directors. I hope it's not lost on you, the magnitude of these organizations coming together and requesting this and protecting our Forest Lakes area. It is no small feat, and we are committed together to protect our organization. No amount of conditions placed on this PUD in its current form will make it acceptable or could expect to be effectively enforced. I ask you to consider the, I ask you to consider voting no on this PUD application. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Jill. Next.
I'm Tom Case. I live out in Rennie Lake, 5270.
Hello.
Drive. I'm here to support the approval. I don't know if you were around when Dollar Lake turned into a party lake and DNR shut down because it got out of control. Right now, GOREC's historical use has been a day camp, group camp. Their new PUD expands on that a little bit so they can help finance that. But if they're not allowed to offer day use to the lake, people will step up and start using state access, which the lake has a lot of. The DNR, they put in an access point like they had the Spider Lake. There's no supervision. There's no boat wash. Things can get out of hand. I've heard a lot of things talked about. Heaven forbid they had a rifle range. They've had a rifle range at the Boy Scout camp for 50 years. There's lots of things that people seem to think are their worst nightmares, when in fact, all GOREC is trying to do is provide a nice natural corridor for wildlife, access to the lake, and since the Boy Scout camp did not renew their lease, they made great improvements to the water shoreline, removing a lot of the things that weren't compatible with that. And as far as this noise issue, I really find it hypocritical. These people that are against the noise part of this, there was parties there. I went through one this year, and the people there asked me on the way back to see if I could hear any noise from the sound system. Couldn't. I couldn't hear that because the neighbors had their stereo up. I'm not talking next door neighbors. I'm talking neighbors a quarter of a mile away. So I think there's a lot of people who are self-interested that want to keep Rennie Lake to their own, but I think it's an asset for the whole community. I have rental property in the township. And when I offer to people, I say, GOREC is right over here. It's a great asset. I want it back to where we can use it for day use, especially during the hunting season. We can place it safely, tightly. It's a lot of amenities. I think you should look at it as an asset and approve the PUD and not listen to these fears and nightmares of people that really don't have the facts to back up these horror storms that they're promoting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, please. Hello, Mrs. Chakra. Would you introduce yourself, please?
Good evening. I'm Carol Chakra, 1863 Caspian Lane. And about five years ago, a for sale sign went up on 80 acres a few hundred feet from where Cobb's Highway joins Garfield. The 80 acres are adjacent to our 40-acre parcel that has a land conservation easement. We were very concerned because the 80-acre plot was zoned residential, so it could easily become another development. That meant potentially 55 or more septic tanks above the Borden River watershed. Also, mature forest trees above the Borden River would be destroyed and the root systems are invaluable for filtering water. This turned out okay because Rotary, Camps and Services did the right thing in the end. They negotiated, and the 80 acres are now under protection of an easement. But there were three tumultuous years when the property was for sale. Neighbors and our own family shared much ongoing concern. We called Camps and Services Real Estate Broker, admittedly several times, and learned, Doug Medea can attest to that, and learned that the cash from the 80-acre sale was needed by Rotary, Camps and Services for GOREC. We asked, what's GOREC? Just about then, Record Eagle ran a full-page spread about a seminar being hosted at GOREC at the location. It was planned and presented by local citizens. Curious about GOREC, I wanted to see the property, so I attended the seminar. It was put on, as a matter of fact, by Carol Kuzel and Patty Hirschberger and others, whom I met all those people that day, and it featured invaluable information about how underground water systems work and what it takes to keep water clean for our rivers and streams. The speaker was an esteemed, knowledgeable Michigan State PhD, and I came away so impressed that I returned home and it was by then all about GOREC and stated goals of outdoor recreation and education center. So I scolded myself, saying, self, you got to rise above it. The cash for the 80 acres adjacent to what is adjacent to us is going for a greater cause, which is outdoor recreation and education. You can't beat it. The story goes on with Rotary, Camps and Services doing the right thing in the end. They negotiated, but it took a lot of citizens' verbal persistence about the Borden River watershed. This good ending is so similar to what we're going through now with the GOREC PUD. This too can have a good ending with the sensible, nature-related, and outdoor education activities to the exclusion of the large events, more than 300 people coming at a time and having to be spread out, but there's how many weekends in the summer. What feels like to many a commercial enterprise with those large events. Rotary, Rotary charities, Rotary, Camps and Services, all do great things for the community. Nobody's disputing that. But keep in mind that Camps and Services buys and sells property. That's a large part of their purpose. Read their mission. I now add to my story about the cash from the 18-acre sales going to GOREC. Actually, on closing day, I learned that the cash instead would actually help the coal dock purchase on the bay's waterfront. And as was said by Doug Mansfield several meetings ago, and he repeated it a couple times, however our elected officials vote for this GOREC PUD, quote, Doug, runs with the land, unquote. Ownership can change, but your decision when you make it is forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kuzel. Chakra, sorry about that. Go ahead, next, please.
I'd like to do this to be distributed to the board, please.
Good evening. My name is Ralph Bednarz. I reside at 1380 Autumn Trail on Rennie Lake. When I managed the statewide voluntary lakes monitoring program, the Walker Lakes Monitoring Program for the State of Michigan, we included an insert in the CLMP annual reports, the back cover, which you now have, which were shared with the 300 to 400 lake associations around the state enrolled in the program every year. I would like to read parts of this and search for you tonight. I'm not going to be able to read it verbatim because I'll run out of time. In 1968, Garrett Harding published the classic environmental essay, "The Tragedy of the Commons" in his journal Science. In it, he succinctly depicted the degradation and exploration or exploitation of the environment to be expected whenever many individuals share a common resource, such as federal rangelands, state to natural parks, the atmosphere, streams, and lakes. Using a community pasture as an example, he explained how each herder added more and more animals to the herd, to his herd, until the pasture was destroyed by overgrazing. Every herder benefited monetarily by adding animals to his herd, but bore no responsibility for the pasture and its sustainability. 2,000 years ago, earlier, Aristotle in his book Politics stated, quote, "What is common to the greatest number has the least care bestowed upon it. Everyone thinks chiefly of his own, hardly at all of the common interests," end quote. Lakes and streams are clearly a common property, shared by the riparian property owners and the community of citizens who use and enjoy the water, fish, wildlife, and aesthetic appeal. I'll skip down further. Unfortunately, most lakes are fulfilling Harding's principle of the tragedy of the commons. Only a few exceptional communities are proof that the principle is not an irrefutable law of human society. When communities are accept, when communities accept ownership in their natural resources, lakes, and streams can be high-quality, sustainable commons. The more each lake owner and user invests in his responsibility or this responsibility, the more certain our children will be that they will inherit our water resources in the same quality that we, the present generation, borrowed it from them. Working together can protect Michigan lakes. The members of the lake associations and lakefront property owners on the lakes of the Forest Lakes area, those in front of you tonight, are part of an exceptional community working together to protect our water resources and way of life. These are citizens and taxpayers of East Bay Charter Township that you represent. Lakes protection must happen at the local level. This township has the tools in place to protect our lakes. I hope you will think about the tragedy of the commons as you deliberate and make your decisions tonight and into the future to protect these water resources today and for future generations. Thank you for your service to the residents of our exceptional East Bay Township.
Thank you, Mr. Bednarz. Next.
Good evening. Carol Kuzel, Township Resident, Caspian voter. In my activism to protect the lakes and shorelands of our area, I've learned many things. Two jump out at this time. One, most people carefully choose where they want to live. When that choice is threatened by change, they become upset. People in the Forest Lakes area, particularly the riparians, are currently bombarded by several issues, including but not limited to the extensive expansion of STRs, the hardening of the shorelines, increasing amounts of impervious surfaces, and the reduction in native plants that together negatively impact our water quality. The challenges of enforcing the Forest Lakes overlay, the Lake More PUD, and last but not least, the GOREC PUD. To many, these feel like an accumulation of assaults, negatively impacting the community where we've chosen to live, work, and play. Combine that, combine that with the struggle to understand the workings of the township, the differences in roles between the PC, the ZBA, and the trustees. The end result is a lot of frustrated people looking for ways to be heard to protect their choice of homes, whether they be primary or secondary. So if or when you hear passion in our words, keep that in mind. And secondly, I've also learned that many people do not feel comfortable speaking here and/or writing public officials for a wide variety of reasons. So as you deliberate tonight, please keep in mind all those who have spoken here and at previous PC meetings, and all those who have written, providing a plethora of rational and factual explanations. Then multiply that by manyfold, to include those who don't speak up and those who couldn't be here tonight. Look at the audience. See all the people present with the Safe Forest Lakes stickers. That's one way for them to share their position. And that position is save the community we've chosen to be our homes by enforcing the ordinances that were designed to protect the health, safety, and welfare of our township citizens and the health of the environment we live in. Vote no on the GOREC PUD. Send a clear message to the Rotary, Camps and Services that they need to work within the ordinances, within the laws, and with our community. Thank you for your service.
Brian Lettinga, Scout Camp Road. Sorry, this just broke. I've...
You break it, you bought it.
Oh, I fixed it. In the spirit of transparency, this will be on roads and earlier use, historical use, sorry. GOREC is attempting to repurpose the water in a non-conforming manner, opening it up to the public to bring in watercraft. It has been clearly demonstrated prior to tonight that this is never how the property was used in the past, and they're making and asking for permission for 60 boats at any one time. There have never been more than 30 boats on the lake at one time, and my neighbor quoted 27 this year as a max. And this 60-boat number is completely arbitrary. It's not based on a carrying capacity study. It's not even based on historic fleet size that the Scouts had at their very own disposal. It's the byproduct of a back-and-forth negotiation during a previous settlement. At the moment, GOREC can also not keep their Bass Lake waterfront safe on Scout Camp Roadside. As a property owner on Scout Camp Road, I drive up and down this road and walk it quite often, evidenced by several occasions this summer, one including an Elmer's crane to lift three boats into Bass Lake directly over the space-marked private property by GOREC, where a wire rope gate is once located. Even more recently, a boat owner removed the wire and then proceeded to launch a boat off a trailer with an engine into Bass Lake, all by itself, then carried on with itself. Those photos have been sent to you all. And at times, township wants to seem to take a hands-off approach to the water, but you have far more authority than you might realize. One piece comes from a 1991 Michigan Supreme Court ruling that concludes the delegated police power authority in Township Ordinance Act enables townships to regulate docking and launching boats for the protection of the health and safety and welfare of the persons and the property within their communities. You have the power to say no. A yes vote here will certainly bring this group in question about its professionalism, knowing the details that have been shared here tonight and in many, many other meetings. This is all public knowledge and points of interest for you to understand. We ask that a no vote be placed tonight and rework a chance for the neighbors of GOREC and Rotary to have a chance to sit together and have a conversation about how to move forward together as a team. Thank you.
Next public comment?
Good evening, everyone. Doug Mansfield, 1233 Rennie Lake Road, Traverse City, Michigan. I wanted to go through a few things that is new information. First of all, the most recent review by the contracted planner continues to provide and say that actions and elements are satisfied because there is no development, no tree removal, no disruption, et cetera, and claims there's exhibits backing that. We have exhibits from the Health Department and the Fire Department and the Construction Code Office saying that bathrooms have to be replaced, septic fields have to be built, roads have to be widened, and the rifle range needs to be recovered. How does this mean there's no... How does this mean there's no disruption? No soil erosion review, no stormwater review done. This continues to say this, even though I've continued to bring it up over the last several months. Your findings are flawed that you're going to look at today. And the sound study, which is frankly a mess. I want everyone here to understand that the true, at 8:00 in the evening, almost every night on Rennie Lake, the sound goes from 55 decibels down to 30. And actually, as they say, their own auditor says, it's indistinguishable. The microphones can't pick it up. It's so low, it's so quiet. So if we start at 8:30, where those ranges are those low, that low, and you've still got 55 to 65 decibels of sound from the bands playing, that's a difference of, say, 25 to 30 decibels alone. Understand what this means. It's exponential. It's not straight curve. This is a thousand to 100,000 times more sound pressure levels that we're talking about, eight to 10 times greater sound perception than what this study conveys. All you asked for was a real-time, real-life examination of this. They didn't give you that. They played with the numbers, they played with the times that worked for them. Because they didn't pay overtime, I don't know, but you could do this. I'm the union township supervisor. I was there when the state went through the noise studies on that rifle range on Supply Road. We asked them to do all different kinds of things, and they did it, and they can do it. The technology is there, and I tell you that's a successful project because I've never gotten a complaint from it. You can do this, but what you were provided with doesn't even come close to a truth, to the sound study. There's 500 acres, there's thousands of feet of shoreline. They took four measurements for 15 minutes apiece across this, over 0.27% of the year. When we looked at the rifle range, we studied that place for a week to make sure there wasn't different activities. And it's clearly evident that this consultant did not know what they were looking at, did not know the restrictions, what implied the noise applications, even Traverse City, which is just a farce. And even with all the mistakes, the last sentence of the last review says, "Existing noise levels drop significantly around 9:00 PM, and that music played after this hour will likely be more noticeable and therefore cause annoyance for nearby residents." Per the township's ordinance, this noise cannot happen. It shall not have any adverse impact. That's your ordinance, and even their own consultant provides that it will be annoying. Thank you.
Okay. Any further public comment? Hi, could you introduce yourself, please?
Yes, thank you. My name is Lisa Farterlin. I live at 5832 Rennie View. My question to you as a board is you were just told that the information that you've received on your noise study is wrong, is false, is far beyond the truth. How could you, how could you even consider passing this PUD when you were just told by Mr. Mansfield, who is highly respected and you've worked with for how many years, that the information that you have is not correct, that it is going to be detrimental, that the noise is tenfold of what they're saying? How can you do that legally, morally, or with any integrity? How could you possibly, possibly vote yes on something where you know, you were just told, the whole room was just told, that your noise study is a lie? So how could you possibly vote yes? So I ask you, please, follow the law, support your ordinances, and support your taxpaying citizens, and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Randy Smith, East Bay Township resident. I live on Monker Hill. I first bought a home on Rennie Lake in 1996 and had that for about 20 years. I wasn't going to say that. I read about this in the paper. It's kind of fallen off my agenda, but the, and I do have a lot of respect for Mr. Mansfield. I've worked with him for many years. But with respect to the information about noise, I installed windmills for 10 years, and the only court case in the state of Michigan that made it here to the courts in Traverse City had to do with a windmill out in Lelandau County where a sound study was done. And no, I'm not a sound study expert, however. Judge Powers, when he ruled on the case, held a sound meter in the room, and it was at 55 decibels. So I didn't read the study. I didn't read Mr. Mansfield's study or the sound study from the rifle range, and I do think they did a great job at the new rifle range. But this room right now is about 55 decibels, is what I'm going to tell you from my experience of being in a courtroom with Judge Powers, which is, I could get the public record if you really want it. Fundamentally, I'm in favor of more recreation, and I'm in favor of the concept of GOREC. I've said that to your planning commission, not to this board. I have taught classes out there for skiing in the wintertime, a couple, three years ago, when they first opened. But I wish you the best. This is very difficult, I understand. There's a lot of problems and questions, but we need more recreation, and that property's going to change. And the state's proposed boat ramps for Rennie Lake across from the house that I owned, where people were launching boats all the time. So I can't think of anyone who'd be a better neighbor, though the transition's not going to be easy. Good luck.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, we will move on on our agenda. Okay, you do have correspondence and reports in your packet. You have a letter regarding some Pine Grove issues, and also the treasures report for July of 2022. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ann, would you go through the consent agenda, please?
The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have the minutes of August 8, 2022, regular meeting, August 25, 2022, special meeting, and August 30, 2022, special meeting. Recommend approval. The general fund?
We also added 9/6/9.
Oh. And we added September 6, 2022, special meeting, and September 8, 2022, special meeting. All recommend approval. And the general fund checks numbered 17287 through 17365 were paid in the amount of $63,950.93 with check number 17268 previously approved. Emergency fund, check numbers 5087 through 5113, the amount of $257,775.50 with check number 5111 previously approved. From the receiving fund, checks number 2871 through 2873 paid in the amount of $84,159.48. The escrow fund, check numbers 1863 through 1874, paid in the amount of $50,479.2. And from the roads, SAD fund, check number 110, paid in the amount of $860.50. Two payrolls, the first from September, no, July 31 through August 13, check number 7357 through 7411, total $69,887.21. And the payroll dated August 14 through August 27, 2022, check number 7412 through 7415, in a total $56,058.72. Total payroll, $125,945.93. Total amount paid, $583,171.93. There are no proposed budget adjustments at this time, and another item is the automated clearinghouse Exhibit A update.
Okay. With that, we will ask any member of the board if they would like anything removed from the consent agenda. You will note that the last three sets of minutes, the August 30, 9, and September 6 and 8, were just sent to you. I believe we sent them Sunday. Would any member of the public like anything removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring that back to the board. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Okay.
The Mavs.
Motion by Bartlett, support by Matt C. I was going to say Matt C., but that doesn't really discern anything, does it? So Cook or Cortaid, whichever you choose, Ann. Any further discussion? Okay, Ann will do a roll call vote.
Bartlett?
Yes.
Cook, because he was right here.
Yes.
Cortaid? Matt Cortaid? S. Cortaid? Lyle?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes. All right, very good, thank you. We will move down to the business before the township board. Our agenda item is site plan review 12-21, special land use 4-21, the GOREC planned unit development. As I mentioned previously, and I'll restate again, the applicant will be given the opportunity to review the newly submitted materials. Township staff and consultant will review those materials and the application, and the township board will deliberate. During any part of this, attendees must refrain from outward expression. Outward expressions and discussion among attendees create a difficult setting for listening for the board and for staff and are not appropriate at a public meeting. So with this basis of understanding, let's get started. Again, this agenda is for that site plan review 12-21, special land use 4-21, GOREC planned unit development. The application was recommended with conditions at the March 24, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. The township board held a public hearing on the application on May 9, 2022, and requested additional information and now, and requested additional information and for a meeting to be scheduled in accordance with everybody's availability. As mentioned earlier, I kind of touched the topic of some of the things, the roads, the parking sufficiency, Besser Hall, sound noise, historical use was talked about, and then again, the memo that was, or the email that was in the board packet as well. I think that covers most of it. I'll just rely on staff or applicant to let me know if I had forgotten anything in there, but I think we've got that covered. So with this point, we will offer the applicant opportunity to review the additional materials for the application. Yep, that's fine. Sorry, we didn't have an easel here, but can you-
Hold it.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Sarah Keever, representing the applicant here this evening. This is Matt McDonough, the applicant. Thank you. I will attempt to address the items that we were to follow up on with you, to give you further information from our last meeting. And due to Matt here holding the board, the presentation board, I'm going to start with parking. There was a question on parking, and so I just want to touch base on that really quickly. These items are in the memo that was submitted, so if you do want to follow along, it was in the memo that I submitted, and it is dated August 22, 2022. Parking has been represented on page seven of nine of the site plan packet that has been before the planning commission and the town board has been in there. The parking count is this chart here, the same one that you will see on your memo that I issued, and it's the same chart that's been on the site plan. Overall, throughout the entire campus, there's been designated 262 parking spaces. And because they're located in different spaces throughout the camp, it was hard to demonstrate exactly fully where each one was designated, so I categorized them on the chart in your plan. Overall, 262 parking spaces. When the campground is full-
I'm sorry, I don't mean to throw you off on your cadence, but I just wanted everyone to know that's on page 70 of 112 in the packet.
I'm having a hard time hearing. Could you speak up, please? I can attempt to.
Don't worry, it's already been purchased, so you go ahead and do what you need to with that.
While you find that, so Eagle has a standard in their campground regulations. So for every one parking, sorry, every campsite, they do require 1.5 parking spaces. So because we have 64 documented campsites, there are 96 required parking spaces for the campsites. And those have been denoted in that little chart on the memo, those are denoted in the blue category. In addition, there are 20 spaces designated for the cabins, cabins located up there above the main parking lot. That leaves, if all the campsites were full and if all the cabins were full, that would leave a total of 146 parking spaces that are located through the camp. With that, there, those are kind of generalized in maybe that orange color in your chart. The one area that was a little bit cross, the one important thing to point out is that because of this, and this is similar to a lot of when you have a case of multiuses in a property, and ordinances tend to address this shared parking concept. That's exactly what we have going on here. We know that an event is going to take place at a certain time, which is going to take place at a different time, maybe the day use, versus a different time that the camping or the classes that would be held. So in that, some, like the Gordon Pharaoh Building is demonstrated in your chart, is some of a cross, cross-use of where these parking spaces would be and how they'd be shared. But it's important to note that, again, there is an ability for multiple users to use the parking that's provided throughout the camp, and those are the camps, or those are the parking spaces that have been demonstrated. Going, I'm going to have you keep holding that, because I'm going to jump around here. The second question, or the other question that was brought up is just a confirmation of what is the occupancy of Besser Lodge? That's been the focus of where most of the events would be held. And so it has been clearly stated, and it is framed and noted inside the lodge. There are two designations, and these are established by Grand Traverse Metro Fire Department. The first designation is 164 occupants seated, meaning tables and chairs, so 164. 420 guests maximum allowed in the dining hall, again, per Grand Traverse Metro Fire Department, such as standing or not with seats and chairs. So that's the differentiation between those two numbers, and that is what's documented as by Metro Fire. Overall, there's 6,353 square feet that has been recorded on file with the building code department, square footage for that lodge. With that, looking at that, that was the opportunity for us to take a look at, again, our numbers. And it does, we did include an update in your packet regarding the size of events. We know that the large events are the ones that are closely scrutinized. Those are the ones that catch the attention of everyone. And so we took a closer look at the numbers and based on, again, looking at the occupancy of what Besser Hall can have for an event that would have seated guests, tables and chairs. We have made a change. And in that table, that again-
Page 72.
Thank you, page 72, that is in your packet. We have categorized weddings and Besser Lodge. So Besser Lodge has been demonstrated that it can have 164 guests with tables and chairs. So we've made that condition. Besser Lodge, 164 guests with tables and chairs per Grand Traverse Metro Fire. Weddings in general, outside of the lodge itself, would be limited to 200 guests. Those, again, could take place maybe in the amphitheater, or in the pavilion, or in the tent space, or the front lawn outside. Those have continued to remain at limited, limited to 12 for the entire year. The intensity, the frequency has not changed.
And that's a reduction of 100 people from the lodge, from the original application?
Yes, it has been a reduction. It has been a reduction in attendance for Besser Lodge. It was originally 300 we had proposed. We have reduced it to 200. It was originally 300 we had proposed. We have reduced it to 200.
Sarah, if Matt does add anything, just repeat it so it hits into that micro. Okay, good, thank you.
We are now going to jump onto the sound study, and I am going to walk through the sound study that was prepared for us. This was a firm that was recommended to us by several other acoustic firms in the area, or throughout the state of Michigan, I should say. This firm was recommended to us also by Interlaken Center for the Arts. This firm has the consultant that prepared the sound study. He is an acoustical consultant with a Master of Engineering in Acoustics from Penn State. His experiences and his projects include noise studies of manufacturing equipment in the U.S. and Europe, car wash sites with residential adjacencies, and high-profile commercial locations. So in doing that, he did come up to the site, and I will go through, to the best of my ability, the sound study that he performed and has written and is included in your packet. So coming to the site, it was taking place over a 24-hour period in July, over a Thursday and into Friday. He came to the site on Thursday afternoon and set up four monitoring devices along the property. They are referenced in the sound study as M1, M2, M3, and M4. And I'm going to try to have Matt point. Those represented all the possible locations on our property closest to adjacent neighbors or the water's edge, staying within the limits of the property, which is what is legally required. So those monitoring stations were set up, and they take a sound reading for 24 hours, one every second. That is to establish your ambient, your average noise, sound, energy over that time period, some sort of baseline, something to start from. And this is controlled. I do remember, I found it very interesting, they do make sure that the weather, it can't be windier than 12 mile, the wind speeds can't be any greater than 12 miles per hour. It can't be raining. So there are some controls set in there to make it to the best of their ability within a 24-hour time period in order to conduct the study. In that 24-hour time period, we also had a simulated event of what we would anticipate being an event on this property. These simulated events were held in the pavilion, which is an open-air structure on the property. It was held in the amphitheater, and it was held inside Besser Lodge. And when it was taking place inside Besser Lodge, all windows, all doors were open. And there was also one, yes, just outside of Besser Lodge, not the water side, the opposite side of the water, of the lodge itself. Throughout that, so then he goes into, I'm going to jump through the report here.
It's worth noting that those simulated events, we hired a professional disc jockey to come out and play wedding music at volumes that were standard for weddings, so.
Tracy, would you just move Mindy's microphone over a little bit, maybe to that corner?
Thank you.
Yeah. Is it too tight? Can you get, well, the desk, or is there not slack there? Okay, that would be good, Matt, thank you.
Can I repeat what I said?
Sure.
I was just gonna say, it was worth noting, she noted, you know, simulated events. I just wanted to explain what that was. We hired a professional disc jockey to play wedding music at those four different locations at volumes that were standard, you know, for a wedding. I was there during the whole thing, and you wouldn't be able to talk to somebody right next to you, but, you know, if you were kind of outside, a little bit more outside of that area, then you could talk, but you could definitely tell it was at that volume, so.
So during the course of the study, and this is following along in the sound study itself, to note, they do always reference, you'll see a section in there where it's compared to Traverse City's sound ordinance. And why he did that is, they always compare their sound study to either the local municipal ordinance, in this case, East Bay Township's noise ordinance. As we know, it's a little bit, it does not have specifics in your ordinance. So what they do is they take a, the closest in proximity, and this being Traverse City, the closest municipality that has a noise ordinance that has some detail and emphasis to it. And so in your report, whether that helps or whether it doesn't, that's the purpose of why that's in there. Is this their best attempt to make it comparable to what a near-adjacent ordinance would have in there? So each four of those locations were operating during the simulated events. And like Matt said, a disc jockey was brought in to perform the simulated wedding events, or whatever you may call them. And at each of these locations, the setup occurred, extension lines were brought to the sites, and the sound system was set up. And yes, for 10 to 15 minutes, there was music playing at an event level, and readings were continually taken, not only by the consultant himself right there to make sure that the common, the standard was using at each site, but also the four monitoring devices throughout the property were being record, were recording at that same time. During these, each, each one of these, and this is, goes into detail in the report you're, you have with you, I am going to, I hope you had a chance to read it, and in that, instead of reading each and every report that was in there, I'm going to now jump to the conclusion. And I'm going to read the conclusion. I'm sorry, gonna take your time and have to go to do that, but I was recently told that unless it has pictures, nobody reads it, so I'm gonna make you guys read, listen to this. The conclusion is, this is acoustics by design. They completed a long-term noise study at GOREC site at four locations along the lake shore, including near two residential properties. During the afternoon of July 29th, 2022, ABD, Acoustics by Design, and a local DJ conducted simulated noise events at the Fire Bowl Amphitheater, the main pavilion, and Besser Lodge. During the simulated events, music was played at a level of 80 to 85 decibels at the site, which will be typical for the types of music events planned at the GOREC site. The measured, received, the measure received noise levels during the simulated events were not significantly louder than the daytime noise levels measured, levels measured at the site on July 28th and July 29th, 2022. The analysis of the short-term noise level increases typical of music showed that locations 1 and 2, 1 and 2, will experience a slight increase in transient noise, for example, short bass thumps or percussive moments during songs. Locations M3, if you can see where M3 is, will be unaffected by the music events, whereas locations M4, this would be, this would be the location that would be closest to the adjacent property owner to the northeast. Whereas location M4, so higher, increases in short-term noise, particularly when music was played at the main pavilion, which is the closest music venue, understood, understandable, the open pavilion closest to that location. These noise levels are still typical for the site and do not constitute a significant increase in noise levels. And it continues. Based on the East Bay Township and Traverse City noise ordinances, we do not expect a typical listener to find annoyance with the daytime noise levels generated by music. Noise ordinances and noise studies cannot accommodate noise-sensitive people who may find annoyances with typical noise levels. We also note that the existing noise level dropped significantly around 9:00 p.m., and that music played after this hour will likely be more noticeable, and therefore cause annoyance for nearby residents. That was his report. Full, clear, full transparency. That was exactly what was presented to us, directly to you guys as well. So that was the noise study. That was a sound study that occurred on the property over a 24-hour period by an acoustical engineer. With that, I'm going to turn over to Matt McDonough. We do have a few more items that we are going to cover. I do believe there are a few things that staff was always going, was going to cover as well. I will let staff handle that. But as, also, just so, we wanted to touch base on this, and this is included in your memo as well, is that if there's a chance for us to discuss the conditions, the conditions that were placed on the applicant during the Planning Commission review, these conditions that are in your memo, we just wanted to touch base on them again. Condition number two would be, it was really just to clarify. Occupancy of Besser Lodge shall be limited to 100 persons until such time applicant upgrades its septic system to accommodate the lodge's capacity. We know, we've talked about what our numbers are at this point, but it was just a technicality to make sure that that was according to what the health department had recommended. The other one, we'll introduce more detail later, but just to make sure that it is covered, item number seven, the condition number seven, applicant shall obtain from Eagle approval of a due care plan appropriate to address potential onsite environmental impact associated with the two former gun ranges and former refuge stockpile. We won't get into them now, but I just want to make sure that those are noted, that we would still like to have those for discussion if we are able to get to that point. With that, I'm gonna turn over to Matt.
Thank you. Hi, Matt, how are you?
Hi. Good, thanks, everybody.
Just reintroduce yourself again.
Sure, I'm Matt McDonough, I'm the Executive Director of Rotary Camps and Services. So there's been a lot of comments, you know, about our proposed uses and, and the intensity of those uses. What I've, what we'd like to do is introduce three individuals. There's some discussion at the last meeting about, you know, trying to, discussion about, you know, past uses when there was Boy Scouts there and whatnot. And so we've, we've had three people come that were closely associated with the Boy Scouts dating back into the 70s to just say a few words about what their experiences were like relative to the use that they experienced, the use that they observed, and how that compares with what our intended uses are. So I'm, we're inviting Ron Lemkool, who was the supervisor of Long Lake Township, Mark Ewing, who was the Executive Director for Scenic Trails Council when they closed down, and then John Rowe, who was a parent of two Eagle Scouts that went through the program in the teens. And their experience starts from back in the 70s and goes up into about 2017, so.
Okay.
I guess I'll, Mark, do you want to speak first?
Mark Ewing. Do I?
Mark, could you introduce yourself, please?
Mark Ewing. I have been, I worked for the Boy Scouts for over 35 years, and I retired a couple of years ago. And I ran the camp for probably 15 of those years, and was around when the camp was being run the other years, so. I do want to say, first off, I'm not an expert in anything, so, just so everybody knows that. But just to give a few historical uses at the camp that I remember, and I know Camp Grillic is an important part of my life, and, and an important community asset. And so many kids and so many lives have been changed out there at that camp. So it's, during our peak times, our summer camp operation would run six or seven weeks of the summer with the Boy Scouts. And we would have anywhere from 200 to 300 kids and leaders for a whole week during those times. And that, of course, only happened through the summer. Some of the weeks were Cub Scout weeks. Some of the uses and other things that happened out there, on our family nights, which were Wednesday nights, and Jerry Olson, and the Olson Foundation would donate buffalo, we had probably over 500 by the time parents and guests came to camp. I do remember the cars were lined up all the way down Hobbs Highway, all the way down Scout Camp Road. And there were 500 people in our bowl, in, in the Campfire Bowl. We also, on those nights, had our Order of the Arrow ceremonies. And a lot of times, those ceremonies were done on the shores of Bass Lake or the shores of Rennie Lake. In the early 70s, there was a Campfire Bowl right on Rennie Lake. You can still see remnants of it, but we stopped using that later in the 70s. And so there were good 500 people at camp on, on those evenings. Other uses that the Scouts did, we had camprees out there quite often. That would be during the non-summertime, 200 to 300 again as well. We had Klondike Derbies, training events, we had district dinners. So there was a lot of activities outside of the summer at the camp as well. Trailblazer Adventure Day, which is a Cub Scout Day, we also had over 500 families, kids and families. Sometimes, I think we even hit 700 one year, and again, the cars were lined up all over. But it was a great experience, so. The, and then there are a lot of, a lot of activities outside of scouting that used the camp as well. We have football teams out there quite often, using the camp for a week. They would practice in the sand. They would sleep, they would be in the dining hall and eat in the dining hall. We had dog training, water dog training. We had shows right down on Rennie Lake at the waterfront. And they stayed at the camp. We even had, the Coast Guard would come in during summer camp, one summer, and they would come every Friday, and they did a demonstration right over Rennie Lake, right down at the waterfront. The big helicopter was there. So I'm just stating some of the things that we've done. There were 5K runs that were held at Camp Grillic in the past, which were big events. We had shooting events. We had a lot of teacher conferences. The Flynn Area Teachers, or FAT as they were known, came up and used the camp many times. And then the other thing that may not be known is that our service organization, our honor organization, the Order of the Arrow, three times a year, we would have big events, one in the fall, one in the winter, one in the spring. And they were usually September, October, and then January, and the other one was in May. So anyway, I talk with my hands. So anyway, on those weekend events, we could have 150 to 200 most of the time at these three weekend events. We had those every year until just recently, until basically the camp was given up. We had those, like I said, every year, and three times a year. And we had dinners in between there and lots of other things. So there have been weddings there in the past. Like, I'd be honest, my son, our son was married out there. And seeing if I missed anything, I want to leave. So we've had ice fishing events on Rennie Lake. We've had them on Bass Lake. So, and, and, and in the 70s, there were water carnivals on Saturday morning, when the whole camp went down to Rennie Lake, and all 200 of the kids were in the water at the same time, doing activities and pooping and hollering and making all kinds of noise. So those are just some of the historical events, and I'm sure there are many more that I haven't even mentioned. We've had a haunted trail out there, where we invited the public to come out and do a haunted trail. So, but I guess that's basically what they wanted, some historical facts. And I, you know, I just, I'd like to see the camp used. It's a big part of a lot of people's lives, so. Thank you.
Before you hand it off, could I ask you a question?
Okay.
You had mentioned the, I think it was, was it Order of the Arrow that happened three times per year? I didn't catch the number of attendees that you mentioned. That was a weekend?
It was a full weekend. They'd come in on Friday night, they'd leave on Sunday. And they were anywhere from 150 to 200 people.
Did they come in by bus, or by car, or how?
No, they just came by car from, from... No, they just came by car from, from Northern Michigan, from far as Sheboygan to Reed City, Madison.
Okay.
They come from all over.
What about those, you mentioned football teams, so I imagine it was used for different sport, sport camps. They're, they're usually best in? Or a mix, or not necessarily?
Well, they were used in a couple of years.
Okay.
When their coach, Julie, but the, the main team was from Haslett, and they were on in Cooks. I'm not sure they were on a, yeah, I think they did bring a school bus, yeah.
Okay. And then, one last thing, the family nights and the camperies, the family nights were just one night, and were they, how frequently were they?
Well, the family nights would have been every Wednesday of our regular summer camp during the summer, so it would have been six, seven, eight times during the summer on a Wednesday night.
Okay.
And we were definitely over 500.
And the camperies lasted how long? Were they?
They were a full weekend.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any clarifying questions?
I got one question I wanted to ask. When they had the scouts there, the scouts, did they play taps or whatever at night? Or did it, was it music, or was it an actual bugle?
Both, but mainly, when I remember in the seventies, when I was a camper there, we woke up to it over a PA system. They had a PA system above the dining hall that would blare reveling in the morning at seven o'clock, and then it would play taps in the evening. And I know that could be heard everywhere, but it, they stopped doing that. I don't remember exactly when, I think the, this whole system was old and kinda went to put, and then they started, when we had a scout or a leader that could play, they would, they would actually play it, so.
Thank you.
And you mentioned the family nights, that was at the fire bowl?
Well, yes and no. The families all came in for dinner.
Oh.
And we fed them on the, a lot of them outside because we couldn't, you know, coat and stuff having them in the dining hall, and on the patios on the side. So, you know, we might have been feeding 250 during our normal week, and then we would end up feeding another 100 to 200. We'd have to cut it off, so they would all eat, but then a lot of them came just for the ceremony. They would all wander the camp with their kids, and then the ceremony, or the, the evening campfire was later.
Did the fire bowl have music?
The fire bowl had music during, we had three campfires, three big campfires a week during summer camp. And, well, they had drumming because it was a Native American-inspired theme, and they had drumming on those nights. But the other nights, they did skits and songs, and the dining hall had songs, which with 200 kids screaming in that dining hall, probably louder than any of the bands are gonna be to play out there. It was, it was pretty impressive. But the, and in the bowl, there would be singing, and if a skit had a, something that they wanted to play music for, they would play music, and sometimes we would do that just to rile them up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate that. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was taking notes here. What were the years that you were running the camp versus attending? Could you kinda give us a chronological?
Yeah, I attended the camp in the seventies. I started on staff, working camp staff as a seventeen-year-old in 1977. And I worked on staff for quite a few years. In 1984, I was camp director for one year. And then shortly after that, I got the full-time position with the Boy Scouts, covering most of Northern Michigan, and, and I, I was not the executive director, but I was under a council executive and charge of running the camp. And then through the, there's probably a ten-year stretch I was the director that I'm trying to think might have been the end of the late eighties, nineties. I can't even remember, because I was involved in every, I mean, basically, every year since 1977, I've been involved with Camp Grillick every year, every summer camp, every event pretty much that happened though.
So.
Through the end of the week period?
Pretty much. I.
That's what I was wondering, is did these activities, what years did you witness these activities going on?
Well, right up until everything stopped. I mean, we merged with Grand Rapids in 2012, and we still had our camp at that time. And then, when the, the whole state became a council, they started making decisions, and I don't remember exactly the year the camp went back.
December 2016?
Okay.
2016, so, I don't even remember our last year, what year it was that we ran summer camp, but it was in that.
That gives us a range, though, in that 2012, 2016 range, that it went through that time period, okay? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll have you hand that off to your next presenter. Hello, Mr. Lemkool, how are you?
How are you all doing tonight?
Good. Could you introduce yourself?
Ron Lemkool, 1270 West Long Lake Road, River City. I'm not gonna cover a lot of stuff Mark just covered because we were out, we worked together out there a lot. But I do remember going out there in seventy-five, seventy-six as a camper, and I got my first job out there at thirteen years old. And I spent my, the next three to four years working at the waterfront as a counselor in training. You know, down there, we had about twenty canoes, ten rowboats, and three sailboats. And I remember the sailboats because I sanded them all. That was my first task to do, is get those sailboats ready.
Could you repeat that as numbers? Sorry, that came at me pretty quick.
Ten rowboats, twenty canoes, three sailboats. So, the thing you gotta remember, though, is that, you know, down there, you know, most people probably don't remember the seventies. How many people lived out there in 1975?
Ron, if you'll just address the board, that'd be great, thank you.
I fight that part with myself.
I understand. I understand. So, you, you, you don't take that personally when I admonish you about it, then?
So, I think the thing to remember is a lot of times, what was it like out there? And how many people remember the siren that would go off that when we had lost swimmer drills, that would wake us up in the middle of the night? Some people probably don't remember that. But you gotta remember, on Friday night, we also had drums out there with the Order of the Arrow, and you'd hear this. And I don't know how far that echoed, but it was in a drum, that's what we listened to. You know, and I think the thing is, is that those were special times, a lot of kids that enjoyed life, that grew up and got a lot of knowledge. You know, I got a lot of knowledge growing up out there as a teenager, preteen, you know, at twelve and thirteen years old, fourteen. And the adults that helped us teach us what we needed to do, that taught us to be responsible adults as well. But, as Mark said, you know, those were big days with a lot of families out there, a lot of cars, and keep in mind that they would drop those, the kids off on a Saturday, or pick kids up on a Saturday, and drop kids off on a Sunday, so a lot of traffic. And they all didn't carpool, some of them dropped them off if they were local. So, I'm not gonna get into too much what he talked about, but I remember the things that we have to also remember, and I'm a lakefront owner as well, so I understand what the noise is and, and how it carries. But the thing to remember is that we don't own the water. We own the, and land underneath, we're riparian rights. But, you know, lakes are active, people are active. You know, think about the bowl that was right on the water, just south of waterfront. And that's where the bowl was. You had that, the dancing, the Order of the Arrow ceremonies, that's what that was for. But, keep in mind that, you know, yes, we all share the history of what's there, and we have to remember that we're just a message to a time and place we'll never know or see. So, think about that as we start doing things, we start taking these things away from kids, where kids need to spend more time out there in doing it. And, and I just can't ever get that time that, that I spent out there as a kid doing that.
So, Ron, let me ask you, when you talk about the fire bowl that you were just mentioning, are you talking about the existing fire, or, I'm sorry, fire bowl there, or the previous one that I think Mark mentioned existed?
First, please, when you talk about it, just south of the waterfront, you can see it down there.
Okay.
We'd come across at night with the canoes, and then the fire'd light up when we got there, and we'd have our ceremonies there. And the thing is, is that those ceremonies happened in the dark sometimes as the parents were leaving. It wasn't during the daylight as those parents were there, and they're just a good time to do that. And I just encourage that we keep the time for the camp as we move forward, because kids need to get outside more and enjoy that time.
We're, and when we're talking about this activity, and this is for Mark as well, but those are campsites that were used, was it also the cabins that are right adjacent to the parking lot? Were they utilized as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
The staff were there, you had staff row, that we had our camp area. And I remember camping out in Gordon Pharaoh during the wintertime, you know, trying to keep that place warm, and then you had the Adirondacks that had the canvas walls, trying to keep that warm during the winter. You know, February gets pretty cold, and we're out there camping in those. It was fun, it taught us a lot of lessons.
Okay, thank you. And did anyone else have any questions for Ron? Thank you for being here.
Can I clarify one thing?
Sure.
On the, when I said that the, the bigger events, and we had cars parked all the way down Scout Camp, Hobbs Highway, we did, but the reason was, it was a Boy Scout camp with 200 kids running around, and you couldn't park cars in the camp, because it was unsafe, because you couldn't have the cars in there. So, we had no option. All we had was the parking lot and what was there. I think the parking has been addressed because now you can park tons of cars in the camp because you don't have all the kids running around. So, these events would not today, without the Boy Scout camp being there, lead to cars being parked along the road. So, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that.
Thank you, thank you. And you, did you have one additional, Sarah? Okay. Hello, how are you? Could you introduce yourself, please?
Hello, my name is John Rowe. I'm a parent of an Eagle Scout, Assistant Scout Master from, I don't, well, I got involved in probably around 2010, and then up until 2017, after the camp closed. I'm not gonna repeat what Herb and Mark said. There was a lot of activity out there. I'd prefer to kind of paint a picture of what it was like out there. And, you know, every day before the kids came to breakfast, before they came to lunch, before they came to dinner, you'd line up in troops outside of Besser Hall in the front, opposite the lakeside. And it was all the troops competing to come up with the best songs, the loudest songs, to get in there to be the first ones to eat. So, it was a loud competition.
They had to sing louder to eat first?
Yes.
Okay.
The louder you could be, the sooner you're gonna get to eat.
Okay.
They expected you to come up with a good song, but it was, really came down to how loud you were. You know, discontinued after you ate in the, the hall, you know, the singing, the stomping, it was just booming sound in there. So, I, I can't imagine, we'd probably have to have Spinal Tap in there, turning it up to eleven, to, to equal the amount of noise in there. So, there was a lot of, you know, year-round activity there during those six weeks, very, you know, very loud at points during the day, not, you know, it was half hour, two hours at a time, probably, not a continuous six-hour window. But, again, you know, rise, the fire bowl, very loud, skits, cheering, same thing, that's much further away from the lake. So, you know, arriving, marching to and from dinner, you'd be singing, cheering, even leadership training, you know, during the off-campus times, you know, the leaders were singing, we kinda did the same thing the scouts did, probably not quite as zealously. Young boys need to get, get their energy out, and, and they did there, and that provided a place for that. And I don't know that I can add a whole lot more on top of that. I, I do know that, you know, I was allowed to bring my own canoes out there and did that, and, you know, at that point, I don't think anybody ever said anything to me, and I wish they had, about being careful about moving them.
Do you know if that was common, or not common?
I'd say it probably wasn't real common.
Okay.
It probably happened. It'd be hard to say, you know.
Okay.
But, and generally, my canoes were not used so much that they were, came from one place to another. So, so that was a, you know, I think that, you know, GOREC is now looking at, you know, upping that standard and trying to take, help take care of the lake. So, I hope that, that is the case, if you approve this, and it just, you know, it was, it was a very active camp with a lot of.
So, your experience is consistent, then, with what Mark said?
Yes, yes. And, you know, that was year-round. The Adirondacks in the winter were, you know, all, all over the camp. You know, there was rifle range, shotgun range, archery range, all going on, while there was Wilderness Outdoor Skills, there was, you know, all of that worked together. And, you know, you didn't have people wandering off the property. The property's very well-defined and fenced and marked, and it still is today, because I've been out there. So, I think people who are on the property know where to stop. I don't think you'd need problems with people wandering on the private property or anything of that sort. There's plenty of land there to not interrupt the neighbors.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I just have a question, and I don't know for one of the three, but how much activity was out there in the winter? I mean, I know you've mentioned a couple of things, but were there big camps out there in the winter, or smaller events with the Boy Scouts?
In my experience, it was smaller events. You know, there might be two or three troops out there on any given weekend, kinda dispersed or sharing the Adirondacks. Some of them may be in the cabins up by the parking lot. I know we did that a few times.
So, when you say two or three troops, I had girls, and they did not do Girl Scouts, so I don't know how many that is.
You know, a troop can be anywhere from ten boys to fifty boys.
Okay.
You know, generally saying, I'd say, generally, we would have fifteen to thirty, depending on.
Per troop?
Yeah.
Okay.
Earlier in my experience, the troop was bigger and.
Right.
Kind of with the closing of the camp and.
Kinda dwindled.
I don't know, just the way our society is now, things have changed, and scouts just suffer.
Okay, thank you.
I can clarify a little bit on the winter. We had one big activity every winter in January, it was OA Extravaganza. There were about 150 people that came from Northern Michigan to the event. But I can tell you that in the peak time, every weekend, all six of those cabins that are in the parking lot were rented by scout troops. And like you said, they hold twenty in the cabins, and troops are probably anywhere from fifty to thirty. And every weekend during the winter, they were, they were full. And then kids were sledding, they would go skiing to Holiday Hills or to Crystal Mountain. We had troops coming up from downstate that would come for the weekend and then go skiing at Crystal Mountain. So, there was probably, every weekend, there's probably fifty, sixty kids in the camp.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm not sure who to have answered it. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming and representing what it was like as a Boy Scout camp. You've made some comments about different things, and the, the groups, and Mr. Ewing, you said you had a wedding out there, but I didn't hear how, I guess, was there liquor involved at your wedding, or at any of those adult-attended events?
No. It was not allowed.
Thank you.
And I did have one other question, and how often did the shooting classes take place?
Well, during, during our, our weeks of summer camp, which was basically all of half of June, all of July, and half of August, they'd be shooting every day of the week, except for the coming-in day on, on Sunday and the leaving day on Saturday. And they would shoot every hour of the day, from breakfast to lunch, there'd be kids out there shooting, taking the merit badge, and so on both shotgun and rifle. And during off-year, they, I know they've had some courses out there, concealed courses, they've had people out there, you know, that, that have different events.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was very helpful, Mark, thank you.
So, moving on to the next item, there was, you know, as you know, one of the conditions had to do with some environmental due diligence work to be done out there. One of the.
One of the conditions was to have the applicant obtain from Eagle, Eagle approval of a due care plan appropriate to address the potential environmental impact. So we have of the two former gun ranges and the former refuse stockpile area. So we've, we've asked James Jackson from Motwell Mavi, our environmental consultant, to come up and kind of update the board as to where things stand. We have had a couple of meetings with the Township's engineer on this as well. But I'd like to just have James come up, he's the, he's kind of the expert.
Very good, thank you. James, could you introduce yourself?
James Jackson, Abwell Mavi. So based on the conditions Matt just noted, kind of our initial path, as Eagle requires, or you guys are requiring Eagle review and approval, we initiated conversations with Eagle on how to approach and assess both the gun ranges and the refuse stockpile area. That's included a couple of things so far. One, we've gone out, we've tried to delineate the impact of the gun range, look for metals like lead, bullet fragments, and try to assess what the extent of those areas are. To date, we've collected some soil samples out there, expecting those soon. At the refuse area, we've looked at through soil borings, whether there's any impact to soils in those areas, collected soil samples. We haven't seen any impact at those locations. Once we get our data, we'll evaluate it. We may have some follow-up investigation to do based on what we find, what the lab results say. And then we'll be essentially generating a report, sending that down to Eagle and looking at different potential exposure pathways if impact is present and evaluating those from a public health standpoint and what we can do to prevent potential exposure. That document's got to be reviewed by Eagle, will be addressed, you know, from their guidelines and recommendations and may require some additional assessment. If not, they will issue a letter that says basically what was done is appropriate and, you know, those conditions will be put in the property.
Okay, any questions right now on that? I'm sure we can always come back to it if we have more, but, okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
So should the board decide to take action today, you know, we would ask that it would be contingent on, you know, the environmental work being completed and then us implementing the mitigation measures, you know, that we, that are approved by Eagle, you know, for the rest of those areas. So just to wrap things up, there are a couple of points I wanted to bring up, a couple in response to some comments that were made. And also just to kind of summarize this at a high level. I'm not sure who the first speaker talked to at Rotary about not making accommodations for folks with mobility challenges. They didn't talk to me, they didn't talk to anybody at GOREC, and it's not true. We have, some of our cabins are accessible right now to be able to access, well, with wheelchairs and other, you know, walkers and things. I actually just met with a construction company about three weeks ago on site to have all of the bathrooms in the, in those cabins reconstructed to be ADA-accessible, both the showers and the, and the toilet facilities. So, yeah, I'm not sure where that statement came from. You know, the sound study, taking a 30,000-foot view on this, I was out there when they were doing it. I was actually surprised. I thought it was going to be louder at the waterfront. I walked around the waterfront, you know, when they were playing music from those different locations. And I had to be very, very quiet to, you know, there's only one location, or actually two locations that I could even make out a slight bass beat. And so I was pleasantly surprised, I thought it was going to be louder. At the end of the day, you know, what the, what the sound study is saying is that there'll be about 12 hours out of the year where it could be annoying to some people. So we're asking for that consideration, you know, can we, can we have those events, those 12 events with amplified music, you know, that would extend beyond nine o'clock right now?
Matt, what did they play? What did they?
Yeah, so they played wedding music, you know, loud music that, you know, with, with a bass beat. In fact, when they went to the pavilion and started playing music, there was, I think they played four songs that were all kind of rock music, you know, what you typically hear at a wedding. And then the fifth, I think it was the fifth song, they played a John Denver song. And I remember the sound engineer who was there said, no, you got to play something louder with like more of the bass beat. That's not like, that, that, that doesn't work. Like I need, I need something that's more, you know, that's more.
Queen, Another One Bites the Dust or something.
You know, so they, they, you know, so they, I was kind of surprised, you know, like I thought, well, maybe there'll be a mix there. But no, the directive from the engineer was play loud dance music was essentially the directive. So we've got the parking, you know, spots identified and resolved, the environmental stuff. We've just talked with that. You know, one thing that, well, Tracy witnessed that she was on the planning commission, but, you know, throughout the process with the planning commission, you know, we made concessions. We lowered the number of events, we lowered the number of people. We're doing, we've done that now again, you know, in consideration of a couple of different things. The planning commission asked for information to be consolidated. They didn't ask for cliff notes. They said, look, we're getting a lot of information. Tracy's nodding her head. You know, because we had a series of meetings where they were asking for information in each meeting and it became a little cumbersome. And what the planning commission asked for, can you consolidate that in a new application? So it's in a single document. And that's what we did. I just want to make sure that's clear. Another reminder, a lot of people are saying, you know, boat launches and launching boats and boats, only boats on the water. I want to remind everybody that we're talking about canoes, kayaks and stand-up paddleboards. We're not talking about any motorized boats at all. And I also want to remind folks that this is the only location in the entire Forest Lakes area that's going to have a boat washing station that's staffed by trained staff or trained volunteers. If, 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 if we don't have a staff person or a trained volunteer there to man the boat washing station, a boat won't enter the lake from our property, period. You can't say that about any private residents in the Forest Lakes area. You can't say that about any of that VRBOs or the state land or the state launches. Our site is the only site. I guess lastly, I'll just wrap it up this way. So back on March 24th, when the planning commission passed this on a six-to-one vote, the following day, the Traverse City Ticker ran an article. It was their cover story on the Ticker article. And if you look at the, at the responses, you know, people can give, you know, give a story a thumbs up or give it a heart or give it an angry face or give it a, you know, surprised face or whatever. Just want to write, and I know numbers numb, but I'm going to try to summarize this. 451 people responded to that story. 445 of those were positive. Nine of those could have been perceived as negative. There was four surprised, four sad and one angry. So even if we combine those nine into being negative comments, that's 98% of the community thought, or the readers of that, thought it was a positive thing. 2% thought it was possibly negative. And I know that's not representative of, you know, not, not everybody who responded to that article where you speak Township residents. But I do, you know, they, they are, I think, somewhat representative of the community. And I think the community does support this endeavor. I do think we've made the, taken measures at the request of the planning commission and the board to, you know, to demonstrate that we're going to be good stewards of the property. And I just, I hope you can support this.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions, my end.
Okay, thank you. If the board can, we'll hold questions for the applicant. We will have those, but we'll let staff as well go over the additional information. Okay? All right, so I will turn that over to Claire and kind of recap how we receive, that we received the information and how we reviewed it, who reviewed it, and just kind of do an overview of that new material.
Sure, yeah, good evening. So I think Beth kind of provided a bit of an overview of what's in your packet. But when staff received the updated information from GOREC, we sent it on to our consultant, planning consultant, as well as engineering consultant. So you'll see in your packet, there is an updated memo from Sarah Capriva incorporating the, the additional information from GOREC. There's also follow-up information from Wade Trim that's included in your, in your packet. That's the technical memo, taking a look at the, the, the questions related to traffic crashes as well as drainage along Scout Camp Road. So I'll turn it over to Sarah Capriva and Brian to discuss the, the details of that.
Okay, that sounds good. Sarah, at first, could you just keep it to what was the new information rather than the complete review of it?
Sure. And I did add that information into my report. It's in page four of 31 of my report. I can pull up your packet. But that, that's a reference to a August 22nd letter from Northview 22 regarding their additional comments, which Sarah Keever went over tonight that has that parking discussion and some of the conditions and the sound study. And then I also included the August 22nd technical memo from Wade Trim about the Scout Camp Road analysis that they did on that, just to include everything. You know, I kind of had a running list of documents we had there. In that, I provided an exhibit list to you. It's the last document in my report that tries to kind of summarize all of the documents that you have that were in your binder that was put together. The planning commission, that was what Matt was talking about at the end. They had requested kind of a complete application. Instead of having piecemeals, the binders were put together and then you received those when you started your review as well. So there's an exhibit list that kind of marks out each of those items and then are referenced in the staff report. So my staff report that was updated, really there were only a couple of items that I went through and updated that first list. I did add exhibit numbers or letters to the findings for you to help show you kind of where you could find that information. And then in some of the standards, which we'll go through at a later time, I didn't change it very much from what you had before because this document that's coming from, to you is from the planning commission. You know, the planning commission went through their review process. They provided input on it. They provided their feedback on items they felt were provided, items that they thought should be waived, as well as the standards and how they were satisfied. So I didn't want to go through and rewrite all the standards. So I might have added a sentence about the sound study in there or a couple of other things, which we'll get into more details later. But that's why, I just wanted to mention that part to you so that you.
Understand why.
You know, yeah, the Township Board can go through and change them, but I didn't feel comfortable going through and changing with the planning commission recommended to the Township Board without you having a discussion about it.
Sure, that makes sense, okay, very good, thank you. Brian, could you go through the memo that you submitted?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody, Brian Souza from Wade Trim. The memo that we submitted, which is in your packet, was dated August 22nd of 2022. And what it does is it addresses a couple of items from the May 9th meeting where we were last talking about GOREC and in front of this board. And those two items are, one, a crash analysis of the Hobbs Highway Scout Camp Road intersection to determine, you know, how many crashes have happened, how many have been reported there, how severe were they, kind of get an indication of, you know, is, does it seem like it's safe? Is it not safe? Are there a lot of crashes, are there very few? And then also to look at drainage along Scout Camp Road adjacent to the GOREC property. That memo addresses both of those and I'll touch on both of those items here briefly. First off, the crash analysis. We did a, so what we do is we, we set up parameters for a certain intersection. It's typically a 250-foot radius around an intersection. And then you go online to what's called the traffic analysis. Let me see what our traffic engineers call it. The traffic crash analysis tool. And that's not something that everybody can get at. You have to be a qualified individual to be able to get onto that and get that information. Any crash that happens is entered into this database. Road police officers can get it, traffic analysis individuals can get it. But again, it's not open to just anybody to dig this data up. We're qualified to do that, at least our traffic engineers are. So we took a look at what the typical situation or typical review period is for, for an intersection is a five-year period in a 250-foot radius. Okay, so we looked at the previous five years, 250-foot radius within that intersection, anything that was reported. There was nothing reported within the five-year period. So we're like, okay, let's take a look at 10 years and a 500-foot radius. So now we're looking at 500 feet either side of that intersection. With that, and it only goes back 10 years, they only keep data for 10 years into that system. So with that search, we found two crashes. Those are reported in the, in the report. One was in the year 2012 on Scout Camp Road. One was in 2013 from Hobbs Highway. Both were single-vehicle accidents involving ice and slippery roads. No injuries reported. So again, a 10-year review, 500 feet either side of that intersection. Now, it doesn't mean there weren't other crashes on the road somewhere else, but if they're farther away than 500 feet, it's assumed that they are not, those crashes are not part of or not related to an intersection that we're looking at specifically. So that's it for that in a nutshell. We were actually, I was surprised, usually intersections have more crash data, just fender benders, somebody pulled out and didn't see somebody or whatever it is. Even car deer accidents are reported. So we were surprised that there wasn't more on file for that intersection. Any questions on that before I move on to the next one? Okay, the next one was drainage along Scout Camp Road. And I think the biggest concern was perception of water draining off of GOREC into the Scout Camp Road right of way. We did meet with the road commission out there to discuss the situation. And our engineers met with the road commission on site, walked that and took a look at it. Didn't, we did not see any what we would call illicit road or water leaving the site and getting into the road. Illicit means illegal for the most part. There is, there is some drainage from GOREC that would go that way. The road commission admitted that there's some improvements that should be done along there. There were some culverts that are almost buried because of sediment. The plan is to clean those out. I know GOREC has one associated with their driveway as well and we recommend that that gets cleaned out. But there is not ditching along that road. And to ditch a road like that, obviously it costs money, but it changes the character of that road because a lot of those, there were some very large oak and maple tree, oak and pine trees in the road right of way that would have to come out if we ditched it. So it didn't, it didn't appear that there was a, a big enough issue to deal with that at this point, but I know the road commission has that on their radar. The other thing that was discussed is the ownership of that property when it was, was originally purchased and used. Scout Camp Road either one probably didn't exist as a road. It was probably a two-track, not a public road. So in that time, I don't, I don't know this for sure, but this is what was discussed on site. In that time since ownership, it had become a public road at some point. So to ask the property owner to now change their natural drainage pattern away from the road would be a difficult situation to do in a court of law. So, so those were, those were the items discussed, but that one boiled down to that where there really wasn't a, a big issue, but there could be some improvements and some, some maintenance items taken care of that would help alleviate anything that might happen there drainage-wise.
So I do recall that when the County Road Commission was presenting to the board, they talked about the ditch work that they were doing countywide that they were starting to, because a lot of the areas and culverts were not maintained necessarily as well as they would have liked them to have been over history, general and across the county. And they were going through a system-wide improvement of that. That way they would start in one area, work their way across. And basically it's like the Mackinac Bridge, once they're done, then they'll repeat. Only the next round hopefully will be less intensive because it will have been done recently. So would those, those roads are county-maintained roads? So that would qualify there if they are addressing ditching there, correct?
Correct. They would, they would come in and clean out those culverts, but to ditch it at this point when it didn't. So the program you're talking about goes back and reestablishes ditches that were there before.
Okay.
There, there's not been ditching along Scout Camp Road. So I wouldn't think that they're going to come in and create ditching with that program specifically. One, because of the cost and two, because it really changes the character of a rural road like that once you provide that kind of ditching. So I'm not saying they won't in the future, but.
Sure.
I don't think it would be done under that program. Now, cleaning of the culverts that are there, that are under the auspices of the road commission would be part of that program.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, Peter, do you have anything to add? You don't, I know you're here as a, as a resource and guide as the township makes any decisions, but do you have anything to add?
Only that you have before your set of findings of fact drafted by Beckett and Rader, who is assisting the township regarding this matter. You already have your recommendation from the planning commission. To the extent that you deviate from that recommendation, whether it's, you deny the PUD or whether you make changes to the PUD. For example, if the Township Board decides that the number of events is still exceeds what the Township Board wishes to have, or that the events themselves are not something that the Township Board wishes to have, or any other items, it could even be some of the day use items, that you go through the findings of fact and discuss those. And those will need to, those will require changes in those findings to support that type of decision. And it should include reference to one or more of the exhibits that you already have, which would also include, by the way, tonight's meeting, which will be the next exhibit here from, on Sarah's list here, including the speaker. from, on Sarah's list here, including the speakers. So I don't want you to feel pressured that you have to make a decision tonight. The PUD statute says a reasonable amount of time, but it doesn't set a specific time period. I think we're still within the reasonable amount of time. If we're going into January, that's probably not a reasonable amount of time. I know you don't want to do that, but I don't want you to feel pressured. You have to sit with what's before you and make your absolute decision tonight. If there's a discussion that results in perhaps a different decision coming out, we just need to know as staff what the basis for those findings are in each, on each of the findings of fact that may result in an outcome that's different than the Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, very good, thank you. And if I didn't say this at the beginning, I will to my fellow board members, but obviously we have, you know, Claire, Sarah, Brian, Peter here as a resource for this board, and as well, we have Preston Taylor, who's our zoning administrator, who is also attending too. So with that, Sarah, I think if you can take us through the recommendation that came to us from the Planning Commission, and maybe we could go through that to see what this board agrees with or disagrees with, or would alter or would want other material on. Would that be appropriate?
Sure. I just was going to get a page number in your packet so everybody could find it. So I have it.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, yeah. Is the beginning of my staff report. Like I said, it's based on the information that came from the Planning Commission, from their review. And, you know, they went through the same staff report and, and identified each of the items.
One second, I just want to make sure everyone has the document that we're looking at. Were you looking for, it was page 37 of the packet? Okay, okay, all right. Are you, are you fine, Glenn? Good to go? Page, well, of the packet, it's page 37 of the packet that came to you. Where we. Yes, that's the beginning of her, of her memo, the Beckett and Rader memo. So you'll be looking for something with that logo on the right. I do have an extra copy here too, so if somebody needs that. You got it? Okay. You got it, Matt? Okay, great. All right, Sarah, go ahead.
So, like I mentioned, this is from the Planning Commission. I did just very minor updates from your last meeting that you had in May related to this document. And the Planning Commission did walk through a very similar document to, to this when they were making their decision and decided if the information was provided or waived or the standard was met and satisfied. So I'm hoping tonight that the board can kind of go through a similar function. And if I'm reviewing a section, I kind of can pause and say, any comments? Does anybody have any changes that they want to make to this section of the report? Does that sound like a, like a good plan to move through it?
Yeah, I think that sounds fine.
Hopefully not too painful.
Okay, as ever, I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to find with, okay? And over here? You had a different packet, okay? The supplemental packet, okay? Very good, thank you. That sounds good, Sarah, let's go.
Okay. So the first couple of pages are just introduction about the property, where the property is located, and the information that's been submitted, which I've mentioned before. So we start on page four of my report, really getting into kind of the items that are required for the site plan. So this is specific to the special use section of the zoning ordinance and the information the applicant is required to provide you with their application for a special use permit. They're similar to what's on the site plan, so it's a little redundant, but, you know, that's how zoning ordinances work and function. So through this, a couple of pages related to that, the Planning Commission found that the items were all provided, the data was provided that was required for the site, for the special use application. And then you'll see on page, it's five, but it's page 41 of your packet, we get into those site plan items that are specific for site plan review. Those items are all provided as well until you get to page, it's page 42 of your packet. Item number 16 talks about a waiver that's recommended by the Planning Commission. This is specific to a landscape plan related to section 229 of the zoning ordinance. And this will be recurring, you'll see throughout the ordinance, or throughout the staff report because it is a section that's referenced multiple times. So the Planning Commission, and you do see this also in the conditions of approval, did recommend waiving the landscape plan for this project, just based on the size of the property and the amount of vegetation that's already existing on the property. And we can get into a little bit more details when we get into more specifics of that section as well.
Can I, can I just have you recap for one quick thing? When we started on page 40 and you were talking about the special land uses. So I realized that a lot of the report comes directly straight out of that zoning ordinance too. I'm used to looking at it in this format too. So I just wanted to talk about in that section 600, it's the, you've gone through the, the procedures, which is the 601 showed everything. And then really, what we look towards then is the standards, which is 602, correct?
Yeah, and 602 is a little bit later in my report.
Okay, okay, let me go, let me let you keep going then.
So I kind of grouped it together with documents required. So we have that in one section. And then you get into later in the report, the sec, the standards for approval, kind of because the Planning Commission, when working through it, you know, at the introduction, they're going, do we have the information? Do we have the documentation? And then they're making their decision kind of, you know, later on.
Okay, so it's the data required for all of them?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
So did any, does anybody have any questions or concerns about the, the information provided kind of on those first couple of pages for special use or site plan review?
And will we get into the basis of why they waived number 16?
Yes, we'll get a little bit more detail.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Well, under section 602 of special land use review standards, when I read it, and I don't know what the Planning Commission, how they interpret them, it said, "Planning Commission shall review, each application shall approve such special land use only if it finds that such land use meets each of the following standards." And I go through the standards. I'm not sure it meets all the standards. So what we're saying is, is even though section 602 says they have to do it, the Planning Commission has the ability to waive all that from the zoning.
No, that's not what I'm saying, but the waiver that's specific in the section was just to the landscaping plan. 602, which I'll get to in a little bit because I'm not quite there in my report, that's where those standard, you know, the standards do have to be met to be able to be approved. And I think there will be some discussion here at the board level to decide if those standards have been met or if additional information's needed or they're not met or.
Well, I didn't read down through all of it. I mean, it, it's pretty specific if you look at the standards of what's in there. And I'm just asking, has the Planning Commission got the ability to waive any of this?
No, so could I, could I make just one differentiation? So the Planning Commission can waive some of the information required. That's what the, the zoning ordinance allows flexibility in waiving, for example, some elements of a landscaping plan. And that's just the information that the applicant provides. For example, if, if the applicant's not removing trees, then they wouldn't, they, they can waive their requirement for a full tree inventory. But the Planning Commission can't waive any of the standards. And so that, those were the, the standards related to the planned unit development, the special land use permit and site plan review. So none, those all have to be satisfied.
Okay, then I guess I'd ask under, have you got a zoning, your zoning ordinance there? Just so I can understand it. Under 602, if you go down to C and F and read that and tell me what I'm missing.
So what you're covering, Glenn, is on page 58, and she just hasn't gotten to that part yet. See, the special land use review standards.
602, and that's what I'm.
Yeah, but 602, she was talking about the information required, not the standards.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It's a lot of information.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sarah.
The next items that come up would deal with the Forest Lake Overlay District. This is in page 42 of your packet. It's six of my staff report, section 231 of your zoning ordinance. So this overlay applies, you know, when you're on the, on the lake, and you've heard a lot about it from public comment. And so the Planning Commission went through this section as well because it does apply and provided that the different information has been provided by the applicant. I did list some exhibits here as well to help you find where that information has been provided. One of the items, and it is on page 44 of your packet, at the top there is the tree inventory that Claire just mentioned. The Planning Commission did waive this requirement. This requires an inventory of all trees that are over eight inches in diameter and different areas on the site. So the Planning Commission felt like there was a lot of trees on the site, that it's heavily wooded, and that it wasn't necessary to go through this process to identify those. In addition, because the applicant was using existing buildings and areas on the site, there wasn't going to be, you know, removal of the trees from the site. You know, if in the future they needed to do any excavation or any removal of these trees, that'd be a different story. But as proposed, they're not planning on making changes that would affect any of this.
And how would that be handled, Sarah? If they were going to, you know, down the road, need to do something for, I think someone mentioned something about like septic or something like that? How would that be handled at that point?
It would depend on what the item was and like whatever the zoning ordinance says. So it may be something that requires an amendment to the site plan that would go back to the Planning Commission. It may be something that it can be handled administratively by staff or with assistance from the engineer. You know, the septic would require the Health Department permit, but at a township level, it would just depend on what the ordinance says for what type of amendment it is to the site plan.
Peter.
I'd make a suggestion that if that's a concern for the board, that perhaps a condition, if this is approved by the board, would be that any work requiring tree removal of eight inches in diameter or greater for any improvements on the property, that the Township received notification of that tree removal prior to it occurring. And then we could, that could be addressed wherever it needs to be addressed in the ordinance, but at least you'd receive notification, since you do regulate generally in the area of, you know, of removal of vegetation now. So that'd be, that could be something you could add in as a condition if you're concerned about future tree removal.
Okay.
Peter, would it be appropriate to, in that condition, deal in just the overlay section? Because that does have a limitation on how far from the water and things like that. So if it's on the far edge of the property that was outside of the overlay where we wouldn't typically require that type of information, then, then the. Okay, so if it were in the overlay district, that could be a condition that they would provide us that information. But if it's without, if it's outside of that overlay, say it's happening on the far southern side of the property, then they would not provide that documentation to the Township.
Okay, and then are you then looking for whether this board concurs or, or does not concur with the waiver for that tree inventory?
I am not looking at, I mean, obviously, the board could decide that no, you want to have that inventory in that area. My comment was reflective of the section being section 231 that, you know, which Sarah clarified, that if they're going to do removal in that area under where it's, where it's regulated, that a condition required notification, you know, to the board. That's all of my comment was.
Sure, sure.
You're absolutely, you know, the waiver was recommended and adopted by the Planning Commission. You can change your mind.
And is that what, as we're going through this, Sarah, is that what you're looking for is on things like that, is whether there's concurrence or not?
Yes, if there's concurrence with the Planning Commission decision. Only, I mean, because in this situation, this is, this is specifically related to a condition that the Planning Commission did propose at the end, and it talks about the Planning Commission recommends a waiver from this section, you know, these different sections. And so far, I think the Township Board, to be able to concur with either those conditions or their motion, should at least, you know, pause on that item and make sure that they understand what the waiver means.
Okay, very good. Does anybody, does any board member have a comment or question on that waiver or, you know, have concern over that waiver that the Planning Commission recommended?
Just clarification. So what Peter stated was that we could make it a condition that if there was any future tree removal in the overlay district where those trees are eight inches in diameter or larger, we would need to be notified of that before it happens. If we add that as a condition.
Yes, and the reason I suggested that could be a possibility for the Township Board is that kind of goes along with the waiver because the reason behind the waiver is that we know that there are trees of that size, you know, within that area. There's just so many that it would be overly burdensome to, to do a study and maybe not that helpful. In any event, it's more helpful to prevent their removal than anything else, and that's why I suggested the condition, so that, so that at least you're aware of why they need to be removed. So the same reasoning for the regulation in 231 would apply based on that condition.
And that actually would apply regardless because it's in that Forest Lakes Overlay District? Yeah. Sure, absolutely. Other comments or questions or concurrence or disagreement with that waiver? I guess if we were to agree with the waiver recommended by the Planning Commission, I would like to see that, that work requiring tree removal to require Township notification under that section.
I'd agree with that. I think that's.
Would anyone disagree with that?
I think part of their conservancy reporting addresses that as well.
Okay.
That would be within 500 feet of all lakes? Because the overlay is defined as within 500 feet of all inland lakes, and then the ordinance goes on to prohibit removal of trees within 50 feet of the ordinary high-water mark. So there could be notification within that 500 feet.
I think that that would be, I wouldn't have an issue with that. Okay. All right, go ahead, Sarah.
So the next items have to do with the environmental assessment. This was provided by Wade Trim. They did the review on this. And in the last packet, it just provided for each of the items that went through. It kind of stated which memo the documentation was included in so that you could take a look and kind of refer back and forth. So this section was just updated to say it was provided in the exhibit, which is provided on your exhibit list. So the, the environmental assessment goes through multiple pages. I'm not going to go through each of the findings for that other than to say that they are provided and included in your Wade Trim. There's two reports that were attached at last month's meeting is for that reference. So I'm going to take that through page 48 in the staff report. Does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns, or anything that should be addressed related to that environmental assessment?
So you're asking if there's concurrence on C on page 44, all of page 45, correct?
Yes.
Through to where?
Page 48.
Okay.
Up to item F, not including item F. And so this is a special sections that's dealing just in the overlay district, kind of above and beyond what typically somebody would have to go through for an approval because of the Forest Lakes Overlay, dealing with soils, dealing with historical items on the site, emissions, hazardous materials, stormwater. on the site, emissions, hazardous materials, stormwater. It does talk about noise in this section, traffic, sanitation, potable water. And this is kind of where a lot of that documentation got flushed out, that you've seen supporting documents in the application, you know, and that's when the House Department review was done and it was determined that, you know, those vaulted toilets needed to be replaced or, or dealt with. And a couple of other items. I don't know if there's anything that you want Brian to address from that. I mean, this is kind of his part of the report.
Okay. And again, this is under the application requirements. So those are the items that were provided to you and you reviewed.
That's correct. That's correct. And we, we went through all of those items at the last meeting as well. Really, the only thing that I see outstanding with regard to the environmental assessment is the, how the, how the gun ranges will be handled as far as cleanup if, if that needs to be done based on Eagle Review. So there is some information that's still waiting, but I know that's in process as discussed this evening.
Anything related to those materials from the board on the, the requirements that were submitted to Brian?
Okay. So then picking up on the bottom of page forty-eight and into forty-nine, we're talking about impervious surfaces, slope protection, and getting into some vegetation filter and buffering items as well as landscaping. And so a lot of these you'll see, they're either provided because there's no new development. And what I'm talking about development here, that there's no earthwork, you know, they're not building a new building that we typically deal with when we're looking at a plan. These buildings are existing or the portions of the site they're using, like the fireball is existing there even though that's not a build, you know, a building per se. So a lot of these items are addressed by saying not required because there's no new development. So there's talking about, like I said, this, this buffer strip and vegetation because they're not removing anything, they're not, you know, they're retaining 100%. They're retaining more than the 80% that the ordinance requires, for instance, in this, in this one portion. And then getting into the landscaping requirements. So this is on page fifty-one of your packet, talking about your landscaping plan and what's supposed to be included on your landscaping plan. Again, being not, not required because there's not going to be changed to the existing landscaping for the site, artificial beaches. They're not proposing to do anything related to an artificial beach or, or any work like that. So that would not, kind of almost not even be, not applicable, but just saying that not proposed, no changes. The same with shoreline structures and adding in any kind of stairway or deck in the 50-foot waterside setback.
Yeah, absolutely.
So by stating that it's not proposed, it's not happening, if they chose to at a later date do something like that, it would need to come back and have the whole PUD revisited?
It would, it, it would depend on what the item was and what the process. But yes, if they wanted to come through and put in an artificial beach, they'd have to meet this section of the ordinance for the overlay district. And I'm just not as familiar, Claire, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, if somebody wanted to come in and, and do work in the overlay district, is that something that would automatically come to the planning commission or not necessarily?
So anything in the overlay district, if it's single-family homes, that's processed administratively, anything that's not a single-family home such as GORAC would be coming in front of the planning commission?
So Claire, I think at the last meeting, if I recall, or maybe I heard it at a planning commission meeting when I was listening, there's, there don't have any, there's nothing within the Forest Lakes Overlay District that's not being achieved with this or being, how do I say that? That's not being met, that the Forest Lakes Overlay would insist upon, correct?
Right, there's, in section two thirty-one, which is the Forest Lakes Overlay District, there's information that's not being provided, but there are no standards that are not being met. If, if you kind of see the, the differentiation. So an example of information that's not being provided would be, and I had some of it written down, the landscape plan, which includes the tree inventory, the landscape buffering near the property lines, the irrigation system, another one with the environmental assessment. There's the market feasibility study, market, economic feasibility study. So that's information that's, that's included in there that's, that's being recommended for a waiver by the planning commission, but there's no standards. So a standard would be, you know, a beach of X size, setbacks of this amount. There's no standards that are being recommended for a waiver or, or for not being met.
Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay, Sarah, go ahead.
I have to get back to my spot in the report I was.
You have to restate the page you're on too, just so I make sure I didn't flip something here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so artificial beaches on page fifty-one. And then on page fifty-two is talking about shoreline structures and stairways and paths to the water in the setback. And then waterside decks is your next section, as well as fence and walls. And these all are dealing in that 50-foot setback area. The applicant's not proposing any type of structure or any of those changes to, to their property. So the answer is, you know, they're not proposed for any changes to take place. So you could say, in essence, you know, this section doesn't apply or it is provided. I just, between the planning commission, I guess, I wrote not proposed because I thought that was clearer than provided, and the planning commission agreed with that. So does anybody have any questions or comments, concerns through page fifty-three?
One more.
Sure.
So where would the boat washing station be?
They're proposing for the boat washing station to be up by the parking lot, and that's outside of the overlay district. Yeah, so it's, I don't know the distance exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's there now.
Yeah. If you can just speak into the microphone.
It's, it's actually there now. It's, it's actually identified as boat wash. So here's the parking lot here in this little square. It sits off this little drive when it's not in use and when it's use, when it's in use, it sits right, right there.
So can, can you, where's the entrance on that when you drive in?
Entrance is here. Pull in, the parking lot's here. Boat, boat wash station's there. And you'd have to remember, and this is, you have to either hand cart or carry your stand-up paddleboard canoe or kayak then. It's about 1,200 feet along this two-track, along that two-track, all the way to the waterfront, to the water site area, which is actually right here. So, you know, I'm going to select out some folks.
Access point that they can launch from.
Correct.
Matt, question for you and for Sarah. I recall in, in the document, I was in communication somewhere, it was about the boat launch site being improved from what it was before? Or has that changed or?
No, they cleaned up some debris that was down there and some old docks and things like that.
Oh, okay.
From when the Boy Scouts had it. But it hasn't been improved.
Okay.
Other than removing, you know, old dock, dock things.
Okay, okay.
I had one question on that because when I toured it, because I, I don't know, we did site, site visit, I did it twice because once on the planning commission, but it was winter and we didn't go to the water. But I spent like three hours walking around that place. There was some kind of a ra, I can't even remember for sure what it was, some kind of a raft or something. It, I looked, it looked like maybe it was, it would be taken out into the water and anchored down for the kids to, you know, swim off of and.
This is on the shore itself.
Yeah, down by the boat or the beach area.
I think it's an old pontoon boat.
Yeah, I think, I think so. I couldn't really, honestly couldn't quite tell.
There is a dock and an old pontoon skiff, flat top skiff.
And does that go out from the shore when you have a camp? Okay.
Okay, Sarah, so with that, I didn't hear any further questions or comments on that portion going through the Forest Lakes Overlay District, when you talked about the documents that were required or waived and the standards that were met. Okay, so now we're on page fifty-four.
Fifty-four, yes. And so the first section there is about outdoor lighting and signs. So there's, on this application, there's no proposed change to the lighting or to the signs that are existing. So they'd be potentially non-conforming to the ordinance because they are existing. But any changes would have to comply with the ordinance. They'd either have to get the appropriate permits or signage. You know, the lighting has to meet the standards or requirements in the ordinance if there is additional lighting ever added to the site or changed or even upgraded. If they want to upgrade one of their lights, it would have to meet the, you know, the 100% cutoff, dark sky compliant. And the applicant, as stated during one of the planning commission meetings, that, you know, they, they would comply with that as well. So the next section is two twenty-nine, landscaping and buffering. The, this section has quite a bit of waivers from the planning commission. So we'll kind of walk through this section maybe a little bit slower on page fifty-four. The first discussion is talking about what type of landscaping plan would need to be required. The zoning ordinance just talks about anything that's a special use should have a complete landscape plan. It doesn't really talk about natural areas, you know, it breaks out maybe like multifamily and then you have commercial. So this is kind of the biggest landscaping plan. It would fall under that category. But the planning commission suggested waiving a lot of the requirements, like I mentioned. So the first one is that a plan is provided that's prepared by a landscape architect. The planning commission recommended waiving this requirement, again, going back to the fact that there, the disturbance on the property and, and new development and then the amount of existing vegetation on the site. They didn't request a landscape plan. As a part of that landscape plan, moving on to the next page is an inventory of the existing trees on the site. And then it goes into the proposed plantings. There are no proposed plantings. There's no changes to that. And then the location of any earth changes, and there's no proposed changes for that as well. So the planning commission recommended a waiver from inventorying all the existing trees on the property.
Question, sorry. It, they recommended a waiver for the trees, but what about the streams, wetlands, view sheds, those types of things? Are, is there supposed to still be a plan for those?
They waived that whole section, item number one, because it was a part of the landscape plan. You know, the wetlands and the streams and the waters would be incorporated in other sections kind of of the site plan. So the site plan section of the ordinance would require that they'd show where a stream is or where a wetland is.
The wetlands that are just to the south of Scout Camp to the east of the entrance, that's going to be noted somewhere else?
That should be on the, the plan. I don't know if it's on that one. I was thinking it was on, let me find what they have. So that would be included in a, basically a different portion, not the landscape plan.
I didn't hear that question, Sue. What was that?
The wetlands. The, the two twenty-nine, one, the zoning ord, ordinance standard on the top of page fifty-five, it says an inventory of existing trees, woodlots, streams, lakes, wetlands, view sheds and other natural features.
Okay.
And that's all part being grouped together with the waiver by the planning commission.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure that we were not grouping together items like wetlands in this. I want to make sure it's denoted separately somewhere else.
Go ahead, Sarah. I just wanted to look back really quick in here. I think I can provide a better answer. One of the things I wondered when I looked through section two twenty-nine for the landscaping and buffering, I noticed that, you know, it has four points to it. And the last, number four, says the planning commission may waive or modify any requirement of this section is not applicable to any particular development circumstances and providing that such waiver does not detract from the aesthetics or quality of the natural environment of the township. And I just, I mean, that basically, you know, it is a natural environment out there and they're not altering the natural environment. So does, does number four lead, is that where they get the flexibility to, to issue that waiver? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have anything to add to that, Peter?
No, your correctness related to that.
So then, does anyone have any further questions or, you know, agreement or disagreement or, or notes from section two twenty-nine?
And Sue, also because the Forest Lakes Overlay applies, there is some additional detail related to drainage, wetlands, erosion areas, adjacent waterways, those types of things. So those are included and were a part of Brian's report in addition to, you know, that they're not included on this landscape report, but they were a part of a different, part of the review. That's what I wanted to track down for you.
Okay. Does, does anyone have an issue with any of the waivers that are on page fifty-four through fifty-seven? Okay, we'll move on then to the standards.
Yep, so these are your review criteria and approvals standards for each of your sections. So you'll see in here, we have the special use review standards, and that's because they are applying for a planned unit development that is processed as a special use permit per the zoning ordinance. So all of the standards for special use permit apply and need to be met in order to grant approval. The next set is going to be your planned unit development standards and requirements, and these are additional above and beyond standards that are located in Article Six that are specific to the application, specific to the use. And you have, you know, a PUD allows for a mix of uses. Everything's just being considered as a PUD. We're not splitting out a campground or an event space. It's all, they're applying for a PUD, which is your, is your everything. It captures all of the uses in that. So those are the standards that are going to be used. And then we have our site plan review section and standards that also have to be reviewed and approved. So there's kind of three different sets of standards and approvals to go through, and some of them are a little repetitive, but we need to go through and answer all of them. And if, if they're on that, then that would be when you'd be able to grant the approval.
Now we, oh, I'm sorry. I just had a question.
Sure.
I didn't want to catch you on a roll.
No, I was just, perfect timing.
So there's a camps and cramp, camps and campground section too. I don't have the number right here in front of me. And I'm just wondering, that, that was, isn't utilized and that's, I'm assuming that's appropriate then?
Well, you also keep in mind that, let's say the, you make a decision.
Yeah.
Sure. If the board makes a decision not to approve the PUD, what remains is the status of the, of the property as a lawful, non-conforming use under the ordinance, which includes the campground type of use.
Oh.
So that remains.
Okay.
So what we're really addressing and incorporating is part of the PUD has to do with the, the day use, you know, of the property as well as the events use. That's the main portion of what you're looking at here. Because again, if you reject the PUD, the lawful, non-conform. Because again, if you reject the PUD, the lawful, non-conforming use rights that have already been established remain.
So we, we're not using that because they already have the ability to do that?
That's why it won't make a difference.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay. And these, I guess, each of the standards, just because they, they are important and I think they'll generate a little bit of discussion, I'm going to just do one by, you know, one by one. And I know it's kind of tedious, but hopefully will generate the most discussion and get us the furthest along. So these are your special use standards. The first one is consistent with the comprehensive plan, your master plan. And the planning commission did find that this standard had been satisfied. It had been met in preserving the natural environment and compatible with low intensity development that the master plan mentions, mostly because of the size of the property and that it is, it is using the existing structures on the site. Does anybody have, and feel free to add anything. If you think that there's additional justification for the standard, we can always add that in for the township board, or we can take out an item if you find that it's not met. We do need to just make sure that it's based in an exhibit that we have in the exhibit list. Or if it's something that we need to add to the exhibit list so that we have that documentation.
Okay, so that first standard is to be consistent with the adopted township comprehensive plan, which was found as satisfied. And then has your reason there with the exhibits?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Eight exhibits, okay.
And that's what I would ask if the board has any comments?
Any comments related to that standard and the satisfaction of that for the planning commission? Okay, we'll move forward.
So item B is designed, constructed, maintained, operated, consistent with the existing character of the general vicinity and that it will not change the essential character of the area in which it's proposed. The planning commission did find that the standard was satisfied. A majority of the sites being, remain in the natural state. The commercial uses of the property are interior to the site and have been provided buffering and screening to the neighboring properties. And the applicant has proposed to restrict the events to ensure minimal impact on the surrounding properties. And so, you know, the applicant would be held to kind of the events that they've laid out. They provided additional documentation in your packet for numbers and sizes of each of those events and typical kind of events they've had in the past that you could expect to see there.
Sue, Sarah. I wanted to hear your question.
That's fine.
When they state that it's limiting to the interior.
Mm-hmm.
They're not saying the center of the fifty-eight, five hundred acres. They're saying the interior, so it could be right along the shoreline.
Right. I mean, you do have Besser Lodge. That's, that does sit on the shoreline there. And so that would be, you know, you, when, when you're looking at the interior, right, it may not be in the exact middle. A lot of the uses are further into the site, more towards the middle.
The desirable portion of the property, but it's also where it can have some, some feedback, some kickback.
Mm-hmm.
So what, if anything, could be done to restate that a little bit differently to, to help with that buffering?
Well, I think you'd want to look at it as a whole. I mean, you could do buffering kind of on a, adding vegetation or some sort of landscaping or wall. You could look at it as limiting the number of events or the uses or the hours of operation, kind of as the buffering or providing.
Kind of like what the noise study was saying.
Right.
It was during specific times where we stayed in step with that.
Right. So yeah, because when you're looking at this, I mean, when I'm looking at this standard, I'm looking at, you know, consistent with what's there and protecting the area with, with the application. So has the applicant done their job to prove or to show that, you know, the character of the area is being preserved and that it won't change the essential character of the area?
So I guess I would have a comment or question unless I'm interrupting another question. For that standard, I would probably look at adding into the exhibit and then requiring as one of the conditions, something to do with the amplified music as far as, and I'm just starting, you know, thinking about some different things. So, so for example, no amplified music after ten PM, or no amplified music in, in the open pavilion. Perhaps amplified music within Besser not to be played over, you know, ninety DBA or whatever they call them, decibels, whatever. You know, trying to get to those, some parameters on that sound so that we can make sure that, that that standard is met. Does any board member kind of see where I'm going with, with this and have any comments?
Decibels, number one. I don't know how you're going to measure it if they've got a wedding going on. But just, let me clear up a couple of things here. You know, I'd ask about taps being played. Well, you can hear that on Spider Lake just about to the boat lodge. It may be farther than that. And if you look at what, if you look at their study here on decibels, Hard Rock Band had a hundred and twenty decibels. Their, you know, I tried to follow their sheet, but I don't have the education to understand it all. It only goes up to like eighty-five decibels. But what I did, and I think I brought it up last time, I asked about, could decibels to me don't, I got to have it so I can tie it to something. In a urgency vehicle, fire truck, ambulance runs a hundred and ten to a hundred and twenty decibels. That gives you an idea where the music level would probably be. And then just consequently, I was sitting on my porch, I'm two miles from thirty-one down where the railroad tracks are. I hear a train whistle. Now, I'm hard of hearing, but I hear a train whistle. I'm two miles from that, all the way up Holiday with all of the forest that's between our place and the highway. And so I thought, how loud is a train when they come through? And I heard it down by a five-mile road to Acme. When they went through that crossing, I heard it. And then I heard it again when they hit Holiday Hills. It said, required volume level for train horn is between ninety-six and a hundred and ten decibels. It said locomotive horns are required to sound for fifteen to twenty seconds before entering all public grading crossings. So that's the kind of level we're talking about for music. And I'm not sure how their decibel report ran because they said they can't hear it. And if I can hear a train or a siren two miles away with all the woods that's between us, I got to believe that you're going to hear it across them lakes. And then people on those lakes are going to hear it all the time. And I, I think that's probably what I've heard from everybody that spoke against it, is the noise as one of the main things.
Sure, noise is an issue.
So I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, that's good anecdotal information. Now, did you happen to go down and see was the train there that time when you heard it? Like, did you?
Run out and.
Well, you do go, you do go down that road all the time.
I did not.
Okay, okay.
I was just sat on my front.
Okay.
And it was, I don't know, maybe a week ago.
Yeah.
Point of reference, up on High Lake Road, almost to High Lake, we hear those trains too.
Mm-hmm.
And there are no train tracks out in our area for miles.
I don't know if a train, if they're a hundred ninety to a hundred and ten decibels. If those decibels are the same thing that what a siren is, I got to believe in my mind that a decibel's a decibel. Whatever you're measuring, that's what it is.
Sure. So, you know, one of the things you were talking about, I've been glued to this. She caught me the other day. I was someplace and she goes, you're measuring decibels, aren't you? I've been measuring decibels like crazy ever since then. It's, apparently it's a new habit of mine. So every time I'm at a meeting or a conference or whatever it is, the nine-one-one ceremony, I'm listening, I'm measuring the, the bagpipes that played the other day. But anyway. So we were on, I have some anecdotal evidence too. I don't know, my parents live near me, about eight hundred and fifty feet or so of far. We were on their back deck. Their neighbor, their property doesn't have a, open space behind them. It's just backed right up. The neighbor behind them and over one was playing some music, kind of loud. We were out having dinner. It wasn't bad. I could hear what it was. I kind of enjoyed it. They had a good choice of music, so it didn't bother me too much. But then I noticed when I went, I went home and the music was still playing, they were a hundred and fifty feet, because I measured it on the maps, there were a hundred and fifty feet from where we were at to where their home was where they were playing the music. I'm eight hundred and fifty feet from there. And I couldn't hear it at my house. Now, does that mean anything? No, not necessarily. It's anecdotal. That's what I experienced. And I think that's what your experience, your, your experience. So I think so much has to do with it as far as weather and so forth. I'm sorry, go ahead if you have a, a comment.
I want to clarify.
If you have a.
The music that was played, you know, as part of our sound study, was what would be typical inside, you know, Besser Lodge or inside a tent, outside of Besser Lodge or under the pavilion. And that's at eighty to eighty-five decibels, because anything louder than that, no one would be able to even communicate within those structures.
Yep, so that's, that's fine.
I just want to point out, I mean, making sure that we're bearing apples to that.
Sure, sure. No, I appreciate that, Matt. But the decibel level, as I think you had mentioned at one time, is about a hundred for a DJ. I've seen everything on the internet from about eighty-five to a hundred and five for a DJ, somewhere around there. What I've noticed is a lot of venues limiting what DJs are allowed to play. They can't go over a certain amount. There are mechanisms to be able to do that. Number one, if you could, you could have it staffed, right? And you can have this, which will be able to tell you that. The other thing is too, there are actually, there's actually electronic equipment that you can set up in the facility that is, is located a certain number of feet from the speaker. And that, I think it actually, they didn't use our, it's not our flip card sign. It's actually a light that goes red, green, and yellow that tells if the decibel level exceeds whatever you set it at. So I don't know if those are some technical options or if some limitations to that such as, you know, amplified music only allowed within Besser are an option. But I, I do as well hear the concern over sound. You know, I remember looking at a property that was on the lake and I said to my husband, I'm not really sure that I want everybody to hear my conversation, you know, because I know that that travels and it's very densely populated in there. So that may be one way to get at that sound. Matt, did you have a comment or a question? You looked like you might, but.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, I get hung up probably mostly with the, the sound issue. I think that's been, been kind of a resounding theme with all the, the public comment for a few months and definitely rings true to me. You know, I look at the, I look at this six oh two B states on the comment that the applicant has proposed restrictions to the events that will ensure there's minimal impact, noise, traffic on the surrounding properties. But when I start piecing together, you know, decibel levels outside of the general day use, all of the events, you know, what, what is this going to turn into from, from an enforcement standpoint? I mean, we're going to have to have a, a pretty complex spreadsheet and matrix for somebody to enforce, to monitor. Is this, is this, you know, self-monitored, self-enforced? You mentioned that, you know, we, you can download the decibel app on your phone. I would expect that in the event that this does pass, that everybody that lives on the lake will do the same and probably be calling the township or the sheriff's department every time that they have an issue or the meter goes over. You know, it, it doesn't, I guess, I'm just, I'm struggling with, you know, how, how we get to a point with amplified music where, you know, it's, it's reasonable, there's a compromise. And I, I just don't, I don't see where that happens. I guess the, the last thing relative to, to the sound is, you know, in my personal experience, it's, you know, I, I respect the, the ABD design. I'm sure they're, are engineering. I'm sure they're highly qualified. I absolutely am convinced they know what they're doing. I'm not convinced that their study was maybe long-term enough, thorough enough to cover different variables. And I get it, there's limitations on time and, and scope and cost here. But at the end of the day, you know, I've been to some wild weddings and I know that, you know, all DJs aren't the same. Some of them, they like to, you know, they like to turn up the music. Things get, you know, a little out of hand. They get wild. You add to that two or three hundred people trying to talk over the music. And I, I just, I don't, I, I see scenarios playing out where if, even if we came to an agreement on what sound levels, what the limitations would be, how would that actually play out in reality?
Sure, sure. I'm wondering about a couple options when you're talking about that to, to address those. One, I completely understand what you're talking about with the enforcement. Looking to staff and consultants to see if, you know, we could, as part of this, impose that any events are staffed for the entire time that they are being conducted.
Well, to a certain extent, I, that, it does add, that also adds a level of complexity as far as enforcement. So you require them to be staffed and then it turns out that they're not staffed because you get a guest or somebody that says, hey, you know, you get a report that it wasn't staffed. Then you have, you know, conflicting evidence, conflicting testimony related to it. You do want to have things simplified, all right, as far as, as much as you can and as much as feasible. So either you, and, and the decibel level, Glenn is correct, is really not a measurement, you know, it's not a measurement of, of the noise itself. It's whether the noise is considered obnoxious to what is really a reasonable person standard, which is the type of ordinance that you have under your noise ordinance. It's not a decibel rating ordinance. It's a reasonable person standard. And of course, there's a, I'm trying to think of which township with the winery where they're in the dispute over the noise, but that was, you know, there was a lot of litigation and expense even related to that type of standard. And that's something to think about when it comes to, to enforcement and, and your final decision here. But, because once the final decision's made, there's, there are parameters of enforcement, but there, sometimes it's not as easy as you think. So if you have absolute standards as to when noise is cut off, that's a much easier, much easier thing to, to enforce and, and address, you know, at a certain time. Or a standard that says, there is no amplified music, or there's no amplified music at all, but, you know, after six PM or seven PM or, or things of that nature, that's the easier stuff to, to deal with. You know, the, the level of noise up and down and, and those type of nuances, that's very difficult to address in enforcement. I think you should keep that in mind. That's the tough side of, of noise. That's the way it is.
Yeah. I think if we were to do anything, I would want to, to see the time delineated for cutoff time. Only amplified sound for certain things, certainly not used with, you know, classes and small events. Cut off at a certain time, all events staffed as well. So between those two, you, you know, if they have to cut it off, there should be, then they're staffed. There's a reason if they let it go on past that time. I mean, not a reason, but there's, there's the ability to enforce that.
Yeah, like I said, it's, it's much easier to enforce timelines, okay, for, for certain events, for noises. It's much easier to address the number of events. For example, those are the things that make things, those are the types of items that, when a decision's made, makes it easier for your staff to engage in enforcement rather than arguing over, you know, the noise or the type of noise or things of that nature. rather than arguing over, you know, the noise, or the type of noise, or things of that nature. So frankly, it's going to be easier for this board to decide that, you know, after this amount of time in the evening, you know, no noise, or no amplified noise, or music, or whatever you decide, or this is how many events we're going to allow on, on, you know, here, and that's it. And for the, the times of the week when we're going to allow these type of events. Those are the things that you're really looking at under, under this standard.
Okay.
It's really the easiest way to go, otherwise it, it does become very tough to enforce.
Okay. Any other comments, Tracy or Matt?
Um, I do like your idea of just Besser Lodge having amplified. Although you mentioned something about no amplified during classes. Well, I mean, I just know, even in like our church sanctuary, I put a mic on somebody when we're just meeting around a table, just because it's easier to hear from one end of the table to the other. So, you know, I don't know how much that would, you know, if they have thirty people sitting in a room, or in that pavilion, I don't know, I don't know if they're intending to use, you know, a mic for teaching, but that would be one thing that I would think would need to be looked at again.
Okay, Matt?
Well, i- it's where I, uh, struggle too, is the, the idea of amplified music. The fact I struggle with the idea of hosting a big event like a wedding on a piece of property that has a, um, easement, conservancy easement, and, um, it's, if the wedding part or the big event part wasn't there, it would make more sense to me. I, I think one thing, the plan is too overreaching, they're trying to reach too many venues, from a campsite to cabins, to having an event center, to trails. Um, I think that goes beyond what, uh, and I'm not a Rotarian, so I wouldn't know, but it, well, my understanding of what their, their mission is. Getting people outdoors, you know, just because you have a wedding outdoors doesn't make it a, a natural event, you know? It, it's, it's, it would be just like you don't have a, a music concert at the Grand Travers Mall and call it a retail event because they sell T-shirts. That's maybe a strange way of saying it, but that, that's where I see it, is that I don't think that portion fits in. As far as having, using the building for training and things, those are larger events, but they're designed to be in one specific area. A wedding is a unique, a unique event, um, between the music, the alcohol, the amount of people, what's being done, what's being said, what's, goes on there. Um, so, I really struggle with that concept of, of allowing it as a wedding venue, and the music.
Okay. Do we have other venues in the township which have weddings or receptions? I guess I, I personally struggle with why we break out the name of the event. I would rather see limiting the number of event, and the times of the year for the event, and maybe sound and staffing. And I don't really care if it's a bar mitzvah or a wedding, as long as it's quiet and it doesn't disturb anybody. Um, you know, that's where, uh, that's where, that's kind of how I was looking at it, is strip away the idea of whether it's, you know, a wedding. Um, as I mentioned, you know, we, we haven't seen issues with other venues in the township that have weddings with disturbances for neighboring properties. That doesn't mean we wouldn't have any here. But I don't know that a wedding is the be-all, end-all for, like I said, a disturbance. Been some pretty-
I'm thinking the thing is, that you got, you got leaks there, and that sound is going to carry all across some lakes. It isn't like it's going through the woods.
Right.
And that, that's where you're going to have a problem.
Sure. Now, they've had some at Hiawatha, I know.
I was going to say, there's been events at, at Camp Hiawatha, and they're right on a lake, and their lodge is on a lake. I mean, I've attended events there, and I don't think, to my knowledge, we haven't had complaints about noise from there.
Could I ask PT, PT, could you stop up here? Just a question on, was there any issue with the noise coming from here? You, obviously there were, what, three transient activity permits there this summer? They were, they were weddings?
There were weddings.
Okay. Any bar mitzvahs? No, kidding, just kidding. Um, and then there was also the sound study done, too. Were there, were there any complaints through the township or the sheriff's office that coincided with those events?
So my office received concerns about the permits being issued, but there weren't complaints of, I didn't receive complaints of noise or traffic. There was complaints, concerns of the permits being issued. I then also checked with the sheriff's department for the dates of the transient activity permits, as well as the sound study, to see if there were any complaints of traffic, parking, or noise during those. And the information I received is there were not any complaints.
So, and when you mentioned you received complaints about the, the permits being issued, was that done at the time of the, the activity? Or was that like off, like somebody complained at one date for all three transient activity permits? Or they were calling specifically based on-
Kind of a blanket, one time, for, for all of them, yes.
Okay.
And for clarification from the sheriff's department, there were two, there were two complaints made around that time that were parking-related, that came back as being classified as unfounded. Being classified as unfounded doesn't mean there wasn't an issue, but by the time law enforcement got there to, to investigate, it was no longer an issue. So it doesn't mean that it wasn't a potential parking issue around those dates. It just, sheriff's department ruled it's unfounded.
Do you happen to know if that was one of, was that our, one of our CPOs on those?
That is correct.
Okay, because I know there was an issue with a car being parked on the side of the road, probably putting in a kayak or something, so, okay.
Any labor complaints?
Excuse me. Um, so, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so let's, yeah.
So I continue to go back to, um, mixing the noise and the alcohol in the event. So I, I guess, I would say that we take the amplification ability out of this. We take the alcohol out of it, and then it goes back to they're doing more of the events that were in line with what they used to do. I don't think, as a general rule, the hiking, the camping, the camaraderie, the, the skills building, those things have not ever been a contention. It's when we've added these other items to it that it's, um, it, it's concerning. So I, I guess I would like to see how we can make something of that nature work, where we take the, the ability to serve alcohol, the ability to, um, to take, you know, no amplification, and I guess it doesn't have to be called a wedding, but limit the number of events that can be held there.
Yeah, certainly alcohol was not a historic use there, it was a boy scout camp. So, we, we would think it wouldn't be. Um, that doesn't mean-
It wasn't served as an event. If they had it, they had it undercover.
Right. Um, so, you know, that, that is different, and I'm not saying that that's inappropriate. Um, there are ways that it can be handled, and we did see that with Twin Lakes, where they said they have a tip server, they always make sure their servers are tips, um, certified. That must be a training in alcohol serving, uh, so, um, for waitstaff, I'm not sure. But anyway, um, that they didn't have issues with that, so, um, but noise certainly was not an issue back then, because we did hear historical use of, um, noise.
Without alcohol.
Without alcohol.
Yeah, I, I believe that those are added uses for the intention of the, the new request.
Okay. So going back to B, you want to just recap that again, Sarah, and then we'll see if, if, um, they feel that it's satisfied or not satisfied, um, related to the planning commission's recommendation?
Sure, so the planning commission found that this was satisfied because the majority of the property is remaining in its natural state, the uses were interior and buffered and screened from the neighboring properties, and that the applicant proposed to restrict the number of events to ensure minimal impact, noise, and traffic on surrounding properties.
Okay. So, um, does, would any board member find a different finding than the planning commission?
I would have to say, based on the conversations we're having, I find that this is not consistent with the planning commission is, that our discussion is not consistent with the planning commission.
Okay, others?
I'd agree with that.
Okay. Matt?
Well, I, well, I agree, in fact that it says, you know, that, uh, restricting the number of events, does it really matter if there's one or a hundred? If that night's the night that it's ungodly loud, you're still being disturbed. Um, so restricting the number doesn't, to me, do much, other than it doesn't happen every weekend. But, um, I, I still, the idea of amplified music, wedding, bar mitzvah, whatever the party is, it doesn't matter. Uh, it's still not going to be quiet, and it's going to be very disruptive, and I don't see where it fits in with what they're doing. Um, it, it's, it's there, and I'm only assuming this, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, but because it generates a lot of income, and, um, that's, that's the sole purpose of having a large event, and, um, that's just it.
Okay. So I'm hearing amplified sound and alcohol, is that correct? Are the two basis for not meeting that standard?
Doesn't meet that standard.
That that is what, that's what we're hearing here. Okay, so we can, we can go back to that then at the end, and see how we would manipulate this to, to do that. Right, Peter? You can.
Yeah, if you're going to modify that standard, that's part of what I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing here. You could, you know, modify and say, you know, you're allowed to have events, but these events are not to have any type of amplified music. Uh, that amplification is only used for speech purposes, such as classes or things of that nature. That's the type of specifics that you need to discuss if you're going to modify that standard. Uh, you will have to get specific and line that up with, with exhibits.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go on then, Sarah, with C?
Sure. Uh, so number, or I'm sorry, letter C, not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future uses in the general vicinity in the community as a whole. So the planning commission found that this was satisfied, um, there's no new construction, um, the majority of the property is maintained as natural area, that there's limited, uh, limitations on the events, boats, hours of operation, um, that would make this project so it's not disturbing the existing or future uses in the area. I gu- I'm guessing, based on the last conversation, that the standard probably will be modified by the board in some way, but I'd love to hear some input on, um, if you find the standard has been met or has not been met, or if you can put conditions that would, you know, basically allow you to say that the standard has been met or satisfied.
Uh, I would agree with you, and I like the way Peter worded that up at the podium, that we need to state the, um, no amplified sound being because it hasn't met the standard.
Matt?
Um, yeah, I'd have to say I would agree with that.
Glenn?
I don't agree with it.
Okay.
And that, when I, they asked about, and I don't want to get off course here, but when I asked about 602 and the special land use standard, it says, read, and there are no hazards disturbing to existing or future use in the same general vicinity, and in the community as a whole. Not involved use activities, process of material and equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, or odor. And that's what I couldn't understand. If it says that, how can they issue a special land use permit? Because we got traffic, we got noise, uh, and that's what I want to clarify, I didn't understand. So, we're sitting and talking about this stuff, and my question, I guess, is in general, how can, uh, the planning commission okay a special land use permit? When, in my eyes, when I read this, it doesn't fit. And that, I mean, we can keep going through this stuff.
Sure.
If, if it comes to the point that we agree this is what the zoning ordinance says, why are we keep going? Because they can't issue it, or they're violating their own zoning ordinance. That's my concern in general.
So you, C, you would not agree with the planning commission?
I disagree with it.
Okay, okay. That's a good way to say it.
That's a long way to get there, but we got there.
Okay. All right, so let's go ahead, no. No, we're not going to do that. Um, we'll go ahead with the rest of the standards there, Sarah.
I was taking notes, I have to get back to the other page. So the next item is item D, will be adequately served by, um, public facilities, highway, street, fire protection, stormwater. Um, these are kind of your outside agency reviews, um, that the proposed use shall be adequately provided for these services. The planning commission found that this standard was satisfied. They had a review from the fire department, health department, road commission, um, and we have the approval letters for those. Um, this isn't saying that those letters don't require something, you know, for example, the health department's requiring some updating to the septic for Besser, if they want increased capacity, and, and items like that. But, um, that those agencies, at least with their conditions on those permits or their letters, are, you know, are satisfied, and, um, so then the planning commission was able to answer this question, that yes, they are adequately served.
Okay. All right, questions on any of the provision of those services? I guess the thing that I would note is that, um, with the wastewater is probably the cap of the, the two hundred. Um, and I don't think that that was a cap on the, the number there, because some of these did go up to four twenty. But I would only want to see that go up to the amount that they could, um, have at events that, where they can handle that wastewater.
I think the planning commission did have a cap on being able to use Besser Lodge at two hundred, or whatever the, the septic would handle. And I believe, we also said that they couldn't bring in, they, they had talked about bringing in those deluxe porta-johns or something, and we said no.
Right.
That wouldn't offset the num, you know, the amount of guests that they could have, because who's going to go outside and wait in line rather than use the one that's inside, so?
Sure, sure.
I think the planning commission had that as a condition.
Yeah, there was a condition that the occupancy of, um, Besser was to the limitations of the septic system, or if it was increased based on putting in a new system.
What were the plans for larger events when, when, say, at the Fire Bowl?
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, for instance, if there was a race there or something like that, that wasn't held specifically inside, uh, the lodge, that they would provide, um, some porta-potties.
Okay.
Just because people likely in that situation would use those instead of going inside, they may still go inside. Um, but I think that, and they could maybe address it a little bit better, too. I don't require at the, or recall at the Fire Bowl, I don't know if, Ryan, if you do, as a part of your review, what that was.
I don't know that we specifically talked about the Fire Bowl. I know we did about Besser, and if they go into a transient activity, then that is a whole nother review, and much like any other race, they bring in facilities and stuff to handle that, so.
Sure, yeah. I guess I was thinking of those events that are between two and four twenty, that are just there, like a regular larger event there. Um, you know, where, how would they-
Wouldn't that have to have a- Wouldn't that have to have a, well, I guess that's not a transient, because that's over the 400.
Right, right. So that's the, that's the only point that I would make as regard to where I would think that we could, I'm not saying it's not satisfied, but I do think that we should probably take a look at those events that are between the 2 and the 420, those that are not transient activity, but yet are above the 200, and that they would have adequate wastewater.
And wouldn't the other side be in the, if they're going to use the Besser Lodge kitchen, that has to be certified by the health department, so that would be part of that piece?
Well, I don't know that we, we get into the, the kitchen with the health department, do we?
That's up to the health department, they don't...
So that's part of their review?
That's part of their review. That's part where you put a condition that you must, that you must receive or obtain all necessary permits from other agencies, and that would be included from the health department. I'm trying to make sure we're on, we're still on, on D, correct?
We're on D.
Okay.
Okay.
I do have a comment when we get to F, but we'll go from, go ahead.
Okay, so you have a comment that, you have comments, Sarah, with B, C, and then septic with D, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the next item is item E, not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for facilities and services that will be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. The planning commission found that this was satisfied, it's a similar use to, that already exists on the site, there's no increased burden, public burden, I should say, from the site as it existed, in that the applicant provided information regarding limiting noise and traffic that we generated from the site.
Okay.
Well, when you put the noise into that part, it doesn't meet, it becomes a...
I, I don't know, I mean, and I look at it at E, I don't, I don't know, is the noise creating excessive additional requirements at a public cost for facilities? I mean, I don't see that. When I read E, I tend to think more of police, fire, and ambulance.
And that's what I thought as well, until you add the limited noise and traffic that will be generated.
Yeah, so I maybe just don't agree with, I agree that it's been met, me personally, I agree that it's been met. I don't think that there's additional excessive requirements on police, fire, or ambulance. I mean, based on solely the calls that we've had out there, plus the types of other venues that hold this, the calls that they've had aren't existent elsewhere in the township with Mount Holiday, Hiawatha, Timber Ridge, any of those places, so I don't think that that what's proposed, or even modified as proposed, would create excessive additional public cost of that fire, police, and EMS. I mean, I did, I did ask Nick to run the numbers for ambulance, and they haven't made a run out there since 2018.
They probably haven't operated.
No, I know, they, wait, did he say 2018, or did they go back to, no, it was, it was to 2018 was as far as the record, well, that's all that he could go back for the records, yes, and there hasn't been as much activity out there. But then I double-checked as well with the fire department, and the only types of runs that they had there historically with the activities that Mark mentioned were, you know, a child getting hurt maybe out of camp, so it wasn't fire, EMS, and police as you would think of as a drain on the system.
Well, the only thing I guess I want to add to that, Beth, is the different entities we've stated are all taxpaying entities, so the extra burden they're bearing on their tax base, as a non-profit, non-taxpaying entity, anything that would incur would be more burden on the tax.
But remember, too, there's a reason that places are, that don't pay tax, they have that right through the assessing law, and that there are reasons that they don't pay that directly. Go ahead, Peter, sorry.
Yeah, and unfortunately, you really can't use that fact as a standard, or a decision, or a factor under the zoning ordinance, whether they pay or don't pay taxes, what they're allowed to do under the law, it's not, it's not relevant to that. But since I'm up here, I wanted to talk about F, but really, E and F related to Glenn's comments here, and one word is important on both of those standards here. E says not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for facility and services that will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community, the key word, of course, being excessive, and the same under F, not involve uses, activities, process, materials, and equipment, or conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person, property, or general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, or odors. Obviously, any type of use is going to have a production of some type of traffic or noise or, or things of that nature, and obviously, any additional development or activity on a property is going to result in additional services being required at some time, you know, by fire and ambulance and all of that. But what the board and what the planning commission grappled with, and what you're grappling with here as well, is what's considered excessive under those standards, not the use itself, but excessive, and that goes to the grade on these standards of where you believe what is being proposed pushes it into an activity that, yes, it produces traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, or glare, into something that produces an excessive amount of those types of activities. So if you're going to make a finding against it, we need to have in there an example of why it's excessive, or if you're going to modify the type of decision that you're going to make here, such as modifying the events or changing the events for eliminating the music here, to state that amplified music, you know, beyond this point or on this property is considered excessive, and the reason, you know, why. So that's the type of debate when we go through, because we have to be, make sure that we have a very good record regardless of what your decision is, and so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
We can take our time doing it, and we can, it can be rewritten depending on what you folks decide, okay?
Okay. So... So E, I think, I don't think, I'm hearing a whole lot that, that we think it's not satisfied, other than to the extent that you didn't mention limited noise in here, so we would want to make sure that that is changed in accordance with any other changes.
So remove limited, I'll remove the word noise from there?
Well, the word noise makes it nonconforming.
Okay.
I, I just think that, I mean, I would just think that first sentence, to me, speaks more to E than the second sentence.
Okay. Well, why don't we take that? What if we remove the second sentence and just leave the first sentence? Is the township board comfortable with that, or a majority of the township board members with that statement?
So restate the part you plan, you're proposing to keep.
As proposed, it is similar to the existing use of the site, and there will be no increased public burden from the site as existed.
And this is related to not create excessive additional requirements at public cost for facilities and services, or be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
I would agree with that.
I'm sorry, you didn't hear that, Matt? Okay.
Should, just curious, should it say, should it be stated to be similar to past use of the site, because there is no existing use, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
As existed.
So it is similar to the past use of the site?
It's not existing, it's existed.
And there has been no increased public burden from the...
Yeah, existed, that's fine. Okay. Anything further with that, Glenn, Sue?
Yeah, I'm still trying to, it's saying is to the existing use of the site, is similar to the existing use, and I don't think it is.
It says existed.
No, it says as proposed.
As proposed, it is similar to the existing use of the site, and I don't agree with that. If you're talking, the existing site was more just outdoor group, not commercial activities.
Right.
Okay. Matt? Again, what I, the way I'm looking at this is how it relates back to that standard.
Right. I agree, it, when you're talking about it, probably cost of the four facilities, there is no added burden of what they're doing or going to do. Yeah, they're going to have an accident, the ambulance is going to have to go out, they might have a fire, the fire truck has to go out, but that's not excessive, we all could have that in our backyards. So unless it's a situation where they're doing bungee jumping out there or something where you could have multiple injuries quite often, then that would might create it. That's the way I read it, too, is that it's not creating any excessive burden on, on the facilities.
Okay, do you have enough on that to...
Yeah, and I think I have a majority, it may not be unanimous, but majority on that.
Okay.
So item F is not involve a use, activity, process, material, equipment, that will be detrimental to any person, property, general welfare by reason of excessive production of traffic, noise, vibration, smoke, fumes, glare, and odor. The planning commission found that this was satisfied, the site's existing, and the applicant has imposed, imposed noise restrictions on the site to minimize adverse effects on the neighboring properties, the campfires are limited to the existing fire pits, the lights from the traffic will not impact the neighbors as there's no residents across the end of the driveway, and the parking is existing and interior to the site. This sentence was added from the last report, and it is about, the applicant has provided a sound study that shows that there will not be excessive noise.
Okay, so I would think that you would just alter that based on how, how that's changed with, how the table, how the table ends up getting changed for the noise, for how we change the table for, based on amplified noise and frequency of events. Okay, okay, we'll go on.
Item G, to ensure the environment shall be preserved in a natural state insofar as practicable, minimize tree and soil removal, topography, and so the planning commission found this was satisfied since there's no changes proposed to the site, and that any changes for the fire access road would require a soil erosion permit prior to construction.
Does anyone find anything different than the planning commission? Okay. All right.
Item H is to meet the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance, meet the standards established by the ordinance, and be in compliance with the standards, and so this was found to be satisfied based on basically everything above in this OFF report, so not only the standards we already went through, but also all the documentation that was provided, that was required to be provided for the application.
All right, any comments on that?
So, so what happens to H if there's a number of items in this report that are not satisfied?
Then that would turn to not satisfied. So we may have to circle back to H based on what the, the end discussion is, maybe for item B, you know, when we're coming back to kind of firm that, that standard up? We can revisit.
Okay, do you want to go through the PUD standards? Those are the special land use.
Yeah, so because this is a PUD, the special use that's being requested, in section 636, there's specific standards for this. Item four, this first one talks about the objective and why we have a planned unit development to permit flexibility in land development, encourage innovation, achieve economy and efficiency of land, useful open space, innovative use and reuse of existing sites and buildings. So this project's proposed to basically reuse the existing site, it's been established there's some nonconforming uses on the site, and kind of in working with the applicant, it was determined that a PUD would be their, their best way to, to move through this to allow for day users and events on the sites. So that's not really a standard, that's just kind of going back to the objective, just kind of setting that, the baseline for that, because you're going to see that come back up a little bit later.
Okay.
So regulations and conditions, item A there, that the use is compatible with adjacent land uses, the natural environment, the capacity of the public services and facilities, consistent with public health, safety, and welfare and benefits, the development are not achievable under a single zoning classification. So some of these we already touched on in the last round of standards, and some of them are new, so the planning commission found this was satisfied. The prop, the property is almost 500 acres, and with many of the buildings in areas where most organized recreation, education, and events would incur are interior to the site, additional restrictions and conditions are imposed to minimize any negative impacts that may exist from the new uses that are being proposed. There's been, then those outside agency approvals and a plan for testing the gun range that goes back to that Eagle do care plan that was talked about earlier.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Does anybody have any comments or agreements, disagreements?
Okay, we'll move forward.
Item B is being consistent with the master plan and future land use. This was found to be satisfied, it's consistent with the preservation of the natural environment and allowing the public to use the property. This is kind of duplicate of what we saw in the last section, nobody had any issues with that, so we can just move on to the next one unless...
I just have a, just a general question about, you know, I guess, PUDs in general and, and this particular application. So in the event that we, we run through all of these, all these standards, we, you know, come to some kind of agreement on different, you know, comments and finding of facts, we get through this, let's just say, and there's some type of compromise across the board, there's an approval with some kind of conditions. What prevents the applicant from, in the future, so I would assume the PUD, if it is passed in any capacity, it's, it go, it runs with the land, correct?
Correct.
From now on? What prevents the applicant from, and what would that process look like, to come back and make changes? So if we get like a PUD light today, what prevents the applicant two years from now to...
An amendment to the PUD?
To try to make a change and push it a little bit further.
Yeah, so the ordinance has provisions for if you want to amend a special use permit and a PUD, so, let me take a look here. Claire just got up, she probably knows the exact section of this, but essentially, you're approving the site plan, you're approving this use, you're approving this package as it exists, or as it's proposed to exist. If there's any change to it, depending on what that change is, it could be a minor change, or it could be a major change. For instance, if you were adding a new use, something additional to the site, I would imagine that would be something that would go through a similar process that's been gone through with this initial application, where the, the planning commission would review and have a public hearing, and then it would come to the township board upon their recommendation, and the board would go through a similar process. So really, any change to the application or to the site would have to, depending on what the ordinance says, go through a certain process.
So there's minor and major amendments, that's what you were looking for, right?
Yeah.
And the minor amendments are those which have no foreseeable effect beyond the property boundary, such as minor changes in the location of a building, the alignment of utilities, alignment of interior roadway or parking area. Minor amendments for good cause may be authorized by the zoning administrator, provided no such changes shall increase the size of the height of the structures, reduce the efficiency or number of public facilities serving the PUD, reduce reusable open space, or encroach unnatural features proposed by the plan protected. And then major amendments are, any amendment not qualifying as a minor amendment is considered to be a major amendment and must be approved by the township board of trustees, according to the procedures authorized in this section of approval for the planned unit development. So there's the, what is the, what is the stopgap from coming back to asking more, it's again, through, through the same process?
Okay.
And a major amendment. Correct? Okay.
Good, thank you.
Yep. Where, where were we at, Sarah?
That was item B, yeah, I guess B, the master plan, no, we must have got to C.
You made the comment that there was no, B had been passed without any stated comment.
Yeah, because I was looking at this, I'm like, I don't remember reading, I was hesitant there to, so C is the use and development is warranted by the design and additional amenities made possible with and incorporated by the development proposal. So C is the use and development is warranted by the design and additional amenities made possible with and incorporated by the development proposal. And the planning commission found that this was satisfied, this is a unique project and providing a mix of uses currently and proposed on the property. And so that's where that, you know, the the PUD application, when you go back to those kind of objectives and the intent that, you know, unique design and innovative can't be done with just one use, those types of things where we have this PUD section where we have an, you know, the zoning ordinance hasn't anticipated every use, but this PUD may help to make that accommodation. And it's also you know, providing something, you know, I guess to the public where this has that natural open space on the site.
Okay. And I think, I mean, all of these that we go through, unless there's something specific new, we're assuming then that anything, we'll go back and change anything that's related to that amplified sound or the alcohol. Okay? All right.
Item D, the development consolidates and maximizes usable open space, and the planning commission found that this was satisfied because most of the property is going to remain in natural open space and be open to the public.
Okay. Any issues? Okay, keep going, keep going.
Item E, landscaping is provided to ensure adequately buffered from surrounding private property and to create a pleasant pedestrian scale. The planning commission found that this was satisfied, the location of the buildings, parking, and gathering areas were interior to the site because of the size of the property, that there's natural buffering from adjacent properties and structures.
Great, I don't see any issues with those, do you? Anyone else? Okay. We're on F and G.
The vehicular and pedestrian circulation allows for safe, convenient, non-congested, and well-despined circulation. Satisfied as it provides this, and there's also additional signage to direct individuals to appropriate locations on the site. I think you, if you wanted to, you could add, you know, they limit the traffic to a gate on the property, so there's there is some traffic to some of the campsites, but in general, most of the public's not coming interior to the site. You could also add that to that standard as well to help define circulation.
Okay.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So as part of this, all parking is to be on the site, correct?
Yes.
Not on scout camp or Hobbs Highway.
Correct.
Because there's no egress, it's only an ingress with scout camp.
Yeah, so there's a condition, one of the conditions that was proposed by the planning commission was that all parking had to be interior to the site and it couldn't be on kind of the access roads even for the fire department. But then the zoning ordinance already requires that the use provide parking on site and not, you know, not utilizing the road for that. So it kind of doubles up, it's a requirement anyways in the ordinance, but to be crystal clear, there is a proposed condition that also says that you have to park in the site.
So that just brings me back to the road race, the race that was there. Because there was running, going through scout camp, off the property, onto scout camp and back. It impeded traffic. So how does that fit in with this?
That's one of those transient permits, if I'm correct on that, that would be kind of outside of the PUD. That has its own its own ordinance and process and licensing to do one of those races, but correct me if I'm wrong, do you?
Yeah, I think, and I was talking with Peter about this earlier, as a part of the PUD review, you can place some conditions related, the transient activity, an example is with Lake Moore, the the planning commission said no special events, so that that limits Lake Moore's ability to get like a transient activity permit for a wedding. So that would be something that the board could could take a look at.
Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
G, existing important natural and historical architectural features are preserved. So the planning commission found this was satisfied, it's an existing project that's going under undergoing a change of use. Will allow for the site to be continued to be used in a similar manner as previously used.
Okay.
The next page, item five, talks about dimensional and use restrictions. So this kind of goes through, this tells you that as the township board, you can make changes or allow kind of for different setbacks or lot size limitations or buffering open space as long as you find that it's consistent with the intent and the objectives of this section and the zoning ordinance. So the only thing that's really mentioned here is that the applicant's requesting to use the existing parking area on the site, and that's going to limit the number of people that can use the site at one time. So we're not doing a traditional parking calculation for this site. They've said that they're going to limit capacity based on the number of parking spaces they have as well as utilizing shuttles to to get people on the site because of the limited parking that is available. And then the applicant has requested uses that are listed in the zoning district, which is talks about a privately owned park and events. So there's not any kind of a waiver, these are all uses that are in the ordinance, although they may not be specific to this district. But you would need the PUD to get them approved. Any questions with them? The next one basically says that they paid a fee and that they own the property, and it's going to be used as one integral piece of land. The next couple of items are more about, you know, what's on the application and that if they're being provided or not, so I'm not going to go through them in too much detail except for to make note of items K and L that the planning commission recommended waivers from those requirements. Those are the market and economic feasibility study, and then other such information pertinent to the development or use of land, they didn't, you know, really find any additional information that they would need. Item seventeen, again goes back to the trees being delineated that are five inches or greater to be on the site plan. The planning commission waived that requirement from being on the site plan as previously discussed.
Okay, we'll go back to the K and L, and the basis of the waiver that they recommended was that just didn't provide any further information that would really impact the development as proposed.
Right. You know, there wasn't any additional information, they didn't really give an additional reason for the waiver.
Okay. Okay.
I would just go back to J, should be handled when the board discusses limiting amplification and events.
J, waste emissions and methods of handling smoke, dust, noise, odors, liquids, solids, and vibrations, if applicable.
So at this point, this is dealing with, they've provided you documentation, so this isn't saying if it's met or not, it's just, yes, they did provide you the details on that.
Okay, did any did anybody on the board have an issue with the market and economic feasibility waiver as well as the landscape waiver? Or set well, as outlined in seventeen and K and L? None? Okay. All right.
We're almost there, we're on the last set of criteria.
Right.
This is your site plan review criteria. Section eight twenty point seven of the zoning ordinance related specifically to a site plan. So item A talks about a proper relationship between existing streets and highways, deceleration service lanes, that there's convenient pedestrian and vehicular traffic. Proposed streets and access plan conformed to any street or access plan adopted by the township or county road. The planning commission found that this was satisfied, the existing driveway does not negatively impact since there's vacant land across the road, the road commissions provided an email that they have no issues as proposed.
Okay, any comments on that? Okay, we'll continue on.
Item B, the buildings, structures, and entrances are located upon the premise situated to minimize adverse effects on the neighbors and occupants of adjacent properties in the neighborhood. The planning commission said this was satisfied, the existing buildings are interior to the site and buffered from the neighboring properties with the existing vegetation. This is a new line that was added, and this is has to do with the sound will be directed away from neighboring properties towards the interior of the site.
So will have any change impact that then?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't know, based on the conversation, there may be more to impact that, I mean, that is stated by the applicant that they would direct, you know, in in the lodge, those speakers away. But if there's something, you know, if we say no amplified sound, then we'd come back into here and say. Yeah, then because there's no amplified sound, that it wouldn't minimize the adverse effects.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that one for potential.
Yep.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
Item C is that as many natural features be retained as possible. And this goes on to, you know, talk about buffering and items like that. So the planning commission says this is satisfied. There's not any physical changes to the site and that the existing vegetation is being preserved.
All right. Any comments differing from the planning commission finding? Okay, none?
Item D talks about the adverse effects of the proposed development on adjoining residence, property owners, and that it's minimized by screening fencing walls and landscaping. The planning commission found this was satisfied, that there's no physical changes to the site, and that it's adequately screened from the neighboring properties and with existing vegetation. I would imagine this would be updated depending on the outcome of your discussion on the sound. But otherwise, does anybody have any other changes that they would need to the standard?
Can I just ask that this would be where that dilapidated building would be taken into consideration right there on scout camp?
Well, they're not proposing any use with that, are they?
No.
What are you, are you suggesting they be required to take it down?
I guess so, yeah.
Are you allowed to require that, Peter? Is it part of what?
Is it determined to be a dangerous structure?
We don't have a dangerous structure ordinance.
Or is it under the nuisance ordinance or something of that nature?
Not that I'm aware of.
I mean, if it's a building code violation, maybe the building department would have to handle it then. I mean, you could adopt the dangerous structures ordinance, but that's separate from what we're talking about tonight.
But this isn't, this isn't, but it's not.
It's not pertinent to this.
It's not pertinent to the the PUD. Okay.
I just thought that it would be part of the adverse effect on property owners in the area because it's there as an attractive nuisance and.
I think that the difference is it's already there, so it's not part of the application.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item E is all provisions of this ordinance are complied with unless there's a variance, and this was satisfied, there's been no variance requested. F, all buildings and structures are accessible to emergency vehicles, and this was satisfied because the fire department provided approval and told us that it was satisfied. So we're relying on that documentation.
Okay, any issues? Okay, well, go ahead.
G, a plan for erosion control, stormwater have been approved by the appropriate public agency, and this is satisfied because there's no physical changes proposed. H, the relationship to shore and stream preservations principles were appropriate, and again, this is satisfied because of no physical changes. Item I, this is kind of a long one, that the plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of the zoning to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, encourage the use of land in accordance with the character and adaptability to avoid overcrowding, to lessen congestion on public streets and roads, to reduce hazard to life and property, facilitate adequate provisions for transportation, sewage, water, education, recreation, conserve expenditure of funds, preserve property values, natural resources.
Okay.
Kind of go through those items. So the planning commission found this was satisfied, that the proposed site will remain mostly natural with no physical changes to the site, the park will conserve the natural resources. The proposed project is a good balance of preservation and allowing the property owner to use the property without adversely impacting the neighbors neighboring properties. The traffic generated is not anticipated to be more than the previous use. And then we have those outside agency reviews and approvals to help with some of the other ones.
I don't think, Sarah, that there's any issue with the comment, I mean, I think all of those are fine. I think what I'm hearing from the board is they might have more comment to be added in order for that to be satisfied, and those are the things that would impact the the item, the two items that we were talking about earlier.
I would agree.
Okay. Any other, I just want to make sure that was. Any other comments from the board on that? Item I? Okay, go ahead, Sarah.
Yeah, so those are all of the standards and criteria that you need to base your decision on. We have a couple that it sounds like we need to go back and rework. And I guess I would suggest with that, and Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, that maybe those couple of items that we take back the feedback that we received from the township board and make sure that we craft the language for those findings so that they, you know, adequately reflect that instead of on the fly. Trying to make sure everybody understands what the decision on that is. And so I don't know if we kind of want to just have a little further discussion on some of those items or?
I would agree with Sarah, I mean, I know the hour's late, but those are important issues, and it sounds like those are the issues that you really have to hash out and specify, you know, the exhibits which may include, you know, the comments that you receive all the way from the planning commission process, you know, forward, and any exhibits that you want to attach to to match the findings that you're going to make that may be modified related to the events noises and the noise that, you know, that you're discussing related to those events.
Okay, well, thank you, Sarah, for taking us through the requirements and the standards. Now everybody knows why it's a very glamorous job being a planning commissioner or a township board member. I I would want to take a look at those recommendations, the one through eight with the planning commission to see if the board supports or changes those.
And actually, I'm going to refer you to the last page of the report because there was, I have a proposed township board motion and then the standards, and these standards have been changed just a little bit from the planning commission. Item two specifically was something that the applicant had suggested to to kind of revise the language for the capacity of of the lodge to limit it to two hundred per, to two hundred people. And then number seven is just a little bit more clarifying on the Do Care Plan with Eagle, but these would be similar conditions other than those two that came over from from the planning commission.
Okay.
And then we can always add conditions here too, if it helps you make it to meet a standard, to add that condition, and we can go ahead and throw that in there too.
So just walking through these ten conditions related to a proposed board motion, the application approved based on the most recent plans and narrative, I'm sure no one has an issue with that, of course. The occupancy and best realized being limited to two hundred persons until such time the applicant upgrades its septic system to accommodate the lodge's capacity. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Well, they have it as, they had two different numbers, one sixty-four and four hundred or something. Standing.
Seated.
Yeah.
Right.
So I can't put my fingers on.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I was gonna say, the capacity based on just overall is four hundred and twenty, they provided that documentation in there, but that's where that limitation would come in, that the health department's saying you can only go up to two hundred out of that four twenty from the fire department.
Okay.
So I think that we can leave that in there as as stated then.
But what about the one sixty-four?
That's the capacity if they're seated in tables and chairs, but.
But that falls under the two hundred.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would be less than, yeah.
So if you're having an event with tables and chairs, it's at one sixty-four, and if it doesn't have tables and chairs, then you're at two hundred.
A reception and they have, you know, no tables, no seating. A reception and they have, you know, no tables, no seating, then they can have 400.
Okay, parking shall be limited to parking.
They can't because of the.
I know, but from metro standard, they can have 400 in there if they're just standing. That's the capacity of the room, not the capacity of the septic system.
Right. So item two, we're just speaking regarding the capacity that's been offered in that condition related to the septic system, which is 200. Parking shall be limited to parking locations on the site plan, shall not be allowed on the road leading to the site or on the driveways within the site. I don't hear any issues with that from any board members throughout this discussion. Is that incorrect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. The planning commission waives the requirements of the landscape plan, tree inventory, and economic impact report. We agreed with those when we went through the standards. So if anybody doesn't agree with that, let me know. Okay. Approval is subject to the application, obtaining all the necessary permits from the township metro, and it lists the agencies. And again, Peter, that's kind of that, that, you know, fail proof condition that all state agencies and licenses, so you don't have to list out absolutely everything that they have to do according to their operations. Any issues with that from the board? Must maintain a state campground license. I did have a quick question for that. That's on the campgrounds, the camp, individual camp sites, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, all right. Applicant shall obtain from Eagle approval of a do care plan appropriate to address the potential onsite environmental impact associate, associated with two former gun ranges and the former refuse stockpile. And that condition, Sarah, is based on what James was speaking about before, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And James, that encapsulates what we were trying to get at, okay? Any board member have anything different?
Just curious what the timeframe is on that. Maybe I missed that in your presentation.
James, feel free to come up and address.
So kind of the timeframe kind of depends on our initial investigation, whether we have to get any other sampling done based on our findings. Assuming we got everything done, first cut around, once we get things in Eagle, we could be, you know, 45 days out for their review once they get it logged in.
Okay.
So it's, there's a lot of variables, but.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Watercrafts from offsite should be limited to individuals camping onsite or as part of a class with a limit of 60. Any issues with this? Okay, go ahead.
My concern is you start bringing, and let's say it's 50, let's say it's 40. You bring those watercraft in from offsite, and they got a wash station. What if one person doesn't get it washed enough? You contaminate that lake, you're stuck with it now. That's my concern.
Sure. Go ahead.
You know, I think with a lot of the discussion around the invasive species, that maybe that's a little excessive. I mean, would it, would it not be? And it sounds like in the past, maybe not currently, but in the past, they've, they've had a number of boats there that stayed on site. And maybe that's a better solution than bringing boats in and out.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify. Number eight, it talks about a limit of 60. Was that, I was thinking that the limit of 60 had to do with their boats plus, I mean, I thought that had to do with the number of boats that they had on site.
The limit of 60, I think they got from their original settlement from the initial lawsuit that occurred and was settled between GOREC and, I forgot the name of which group it was there where they talked about that. The other item, though, has to do with the fact that the boat, a number of boats established are also already a record based upon a lawful nonconforming use, that there's a continuity of boat usage there, you know, that's gone on there for decades. And I think that figure for the lawful nonconforming use is pretty close, within one or two boats of the number of 60, you know, irrespective of the washing station. The addition of the washing station was done through the private litigation, but if they, and I haven't heard any objection from GOREC of including that and policing that as part of the condition here. So if you added that as a condition, and GOREC said they'd accept that, then I think you're good.
The, the number of watercraft you mentioned is from the historical nonconforming use, though, would not include these. These would be in addition to that because this just says watercraft from offsite.
No, we're not going to have an addition. It would be the total amount of watercraft on the property, period, at any given time.
But the individuals, it says watercraft from offsite, so this would not be distinguished between offsite or onsite.
That's not how it, I mean, unless you want to add that to it, I know, and that's part of the PUD, but, you know, frankly, you have that regulation that talks about a public site, you know, and watercraft coming in off the public sites. My recommendation is you stick with either lawful nonconforming use, which is very close to this number, but this should be really the total number of boats, not an additional 60 boats on top of another 60 or 59, depending on their historical use.
So we should add total and before 60?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Lemkohl mentioned 10, 20, and 3 back from his recollection when he ran that part. So that'd be 33, not 60.
There's been a lot more evidence of the historical use because that's been extensively looked at by staff. You know, the proof of a lawful nonconforming use is on the property owner. They have the burden of proof of putting that together. They put together, you know, figures, we had affidavits. There's a bunch of evidence in the record regarding what constitute a lawful nonconforming use. The 60 watercraft came from their litigation irrespective of that, but I'm pretty sure, if my memory serves me, that this is within one, you know, or two boats. I think I counted 59, if, from what I recall of the evidence they had of a lawful nonconforming use. But, you know, this is going to be the total number, not, not an additional 60 on here.
So Sarah, could you read that back again, how that was edited?
Watercraft from offsite should be limited to individuals camping onsite or as a part of a class with a limit of.
Total limit?
With a limit of 60 total watercraft onsite and from onsite and offsite, or something to that effect.
At any given time, 60 boats.
Okay. There we go. A limit of.
You just mentioned the word boat. This says watercraft. Are we, are we clear on the terminology? I know it's, we've had some issues with it in the past.
Watercraft is a boat. Boat is defined under the zoning ordinance. And I suppose part of it also is that GOREC is made of representation. They can come up here, I suppose, and tell me if I'm wrong, but that there will not be any motorized watercraft. So you're going to have, you could even add that in as a, as a condition, that this is a maximum of 60 watercraft or boats that are non-motorized. I think, I'm not sure if GOREC would object to that.
Just for this board, I know the planning commission to discuss it, but I believe they have one motorized, or they did have one motorized vehicle, boat, for emergency use. Like if they, if someone had a problem in the lake, they had a means to get to them quickly.
They, that would probably be part of the lawful nonconforming because they had that with the camping.
Right. I know, but I just, because you said non-motorized, I wanted them to know that, at least at the planning commission level, we discussed they had one motorized something for emergencies out on the water.
So then the way that this is worded, too, then this does not allow the public to bring on, to put in from the, from the property unless they are camping or at a class. Is that correct?
That was my understanding of what was proposed, you know, by GOREC. I mean, the lawful nonconforming use doesn't distinguish, okay? It's lawful nonconforming use has to do with what was there, period, as to what was being used on the property, not where the boat came from, you know, to begin with, whether they were onsite or offsite. The issue is the number of boats, and there's cases that talk about, you know, what you can distinguish and what you can't between junkyards, you know, having junk cars versus, you know, junk parts from, from other vehicles. And the courts say, you know, everything is junk, it doesn't matter how you define it. And therefore, in this case, with the number of boats for lawful nonconforming use, whether it's motorized or non-motorized, they have a historical record with this number of boats here, period. Now, GOREC is represented, except for perhaps with the planning commission, you know, what occurred to the planning commission, that the vast majority, if not almost all of them, except for one as a rescue boat, would be non-motorized watercraft or boats as defined under the zoning ordinance. And the total would be this amount, period, not, not in addition to anything else.
Okay, so let me just be clear. Is the number of 60 a point of debate for this PUD or not because of the lawful nonconforming?
It's not a material point of debate because of the lawful nonconforming. I believe I counted 59 from the evidence.
Okay.
So you've got one boat, that's an issue here.
Yeah, okay, I understand. But I just wanted to make sure because I know that could, if all 60 were out there all at one time, which is probably not likely to happen, but if that does happen, that would probably be a lot out there, even with non-motorized. But it doesn't sound like that's really a point that can be made here anyway because it has the lawful nonconforming.
It's on the site, whether they are in the water or on the site itself. The regulation in, you know, for the, the access of a private property for public purposes has to do with what occurs within 50 feet on either side of the waterline. Okay, that's how the ordinance is written. It's just the way it's written. If it's within 50 feet of the shoreline or 50 feet offshore, that's where that restriction comes in under the overlay district. It doesn't apply to what's occurring beyond 50 feet onshore, whether they have, you know, boat storage or whatever here. In this case here, GOREC is agreeing that there's going to be 60 boats here. It's also something that they agreed on in their private litigation. We're not going to enforce the private litigation. They have separate litigants that can do that.
Sure.
But there's, they're, they're adding that, that as a condition that, yes, we voluntarily agree with what we agreed with in the private litigation in conjunction with a lawful nonconforming use, whether those boats are in the water or on the shore or on the property.
So can we, can we alter number eight to be non-motorized watercrafts from, or non-motorized watercraft should be limited to individuals camping onsite or as part of a class with a limit of 60 total watercraft onsite?
Sure, unless they wanted to add the one, you know, the rescue boat, if that was.
We can add terminology for the one motorized rescue boat. Okay.
Is there any discussion for them to be GOREC boats, not private citizen boats?
Then why do they have?
You could have a discussion, but it wouldn't be material on the lawful nonconforming use because they're allowed to have those boats, period, whether they're, they're not distinguishing who owns the boat.
I'm just looking to limit the.
That's why they, I mean, that's probably why they had the litigation involving the boat washing station there.
Well, the litigation, was that settled? Do you know, was that a settlement?
They can provide the information, but I did read the settlement order. So yes, they had a settlement order that required the boat washing station with a certain criteria for it.
So it was agreed upon by both sides?
Agreed upon by both sides, but it's, you know, private. And so GOREC has said that we're going to abide by it, and even if it's a condition here as far as the boat washing station.
Okay.
So that's really what this is about.
Any further comments on number eight? Okay, on nine, large events should not be allowed on consecutive weekends. Weekends are considered Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And I have, yeah.
Okay, large events, they could have 20 a year, and they limit 12 weddings, May 1st through October 31st, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's what it says on the chart, yeah.
Now, mid-size events, they can have 50 a year, correct?
That's what it says here, yes.
And that can be weddings, too, correct?
They're not, I mean.
I mean, they don't distinguish it.
Yeah, they're not distinguished between the type.
So technically, you could have 20 weddings or 70 weddings a year out there.
That's what I was saying earlier is just strip away what it's called. An event is an event is an event. What matters is, yeah, the what matters is, is it disturbing elsewhere, the size of it? Can it handle, the, can, is the noise acceptable? Is the wastewater, you know, can, do we have the capacity, do they have the capacity to treat that? That sort of thing. Because you start to parse into, well, is it a graduation or is it a?
Well, the thing that I was trying to distinguish was that races and retreats and stuff, they're not going to have bands playing at weddings who will help.
Yeah, but that's not necessarily true, though. I mean, you could, you know, races or retreat, you could have all different sorts of things at events. That's why I don't see the naming nomenclature of it as very useful. I think it actually can be less useful. I think it's more useful to talk about what does that look like and what's the impact of that. But that's just my thoughts with that, so.
If it can't be back to back to back.
What's that?
If they can't be back to back weekends, then this, what you're saying is 50 a year and 20 a year, that's 70, that's more than back to back weekends.
To a weekend for a while. Okay, that's all I just wanted to clarify.
So how is it that the board would like to handle the table that's on page, oof.
Seventy-two?
That's seventy-two, yes, from the applicant. I mean, general day use, daily, all year, hiking, biking, pedaling, disc golf, that sort of thing. Does this have general hours? I know our parks have hours, do, does this, would this have hours typically for general day use, someone on site? Go ahead.
Yeah, you certainly can restrict hours for general day use within reason. Yes, you can if you wish to do so. Obviously, the campers are there overnight or several days.
Right, right. I was just wondering, I'm not, you know, the board can choose to do that or not. I just had the question of if there was hours because I was just thinking about the parks and the similarity there, so. So how does the board want to handle the general day use? It's fine the way that it is? Okay. Classes and small events, one to 30 guests daily, and they could have them throughout the year.
Just clarification on this, on this table. How is, how is this, and I may need to go back to planning commission meeting, but I guess I've forgotten. How is this tracked? So is this, are they registering these events with the township in advance on a schedule? And we're kind of like keeping tabs on how many of these events are happening and which weekend and nights they're happening on?
So obviously, general, go ahead, you're, no, go ahead.
At the planning commission level, they agreed to have a calendar that we, a public calendar or calendar that we would have access to for anything over 100 people, I think, if I remember correctly. Sarah, do you remember?
That's what I was looking, I was thinking it was only for the large events, but.
For some reason, I thought it was for over 100 people, but I don't. It's 11 o'clock and.
Is it over?
Been here for.
Okay. Yeah, so the over 100 is considered a large event. So anything that's a large event would be on a calendar.
There was something like that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but, but if we're going to have this table and we're going to set, you know, we're going to set standards around these things, shouldn't they all be on a calendar and accessible?
I think this is, these are on here to be part of the agreement, correct?
I'm just talking about the way that we, we track them and maintain them. You know, if we're, if we're going to say here's, you know.
Well, it's, it's, isn't it?
Here's the boundaries.
It's like the speed limit. How do we track and do it? I mean, we, you monitor it. If there's an issue, then you come back to this, correct?
That's correct, yeah. But what, you know, I think what you're talking about is that you just assume to track them all. I don't know how doable that is for, you know, for staff. I think the, you know, the idea behind that was to, you know, was to track the easier ones that were there. And I guess that's part of what you're talking about.
Well, if we're, if we're going to, if, you know, if we're going to state there's only 50 a year, who's to say that there's 50 a year? How do, how do we know?
That's true. I mean, it's, you know, unless there's a tracking and a notice requirement, you're right. You're not going to know.
Do you wait till after the fact when the police get called 50 times or 51 times and then, you know?
Well, or how do you determine that it's 51?
Right.
If you have 50, without at least that being notified of it? I mean, I can see that, so.
Or 101 guests.
Right, who's a guest?
Into a large amount.
Yeah, there has to be some.
But again, there has to be some, there has to be some evidence of it being not compliant with that. I mean, just like, you know, you set the speed limit at 55, someone goes 60. Yeah, they might. Can you do anything about it? Well, you have to have evidence. You've got to have somebody have the radar or whatever.
Yeah, I totally get that. I'm, I'm being a little bit extreme and, you know, kind of silly with what I'm saying. I guess my point is we have this table and it defines all of these different criteria. And it's, you know, do, do we want to only define those criteria for which, you know, we want to monitor? That we want to track?
Yeah, there's quite a bit of information here, like examples and the names of classes and so forth. I'm. I'm really focusing on what, what is the use? General day use, small class, mid-size events? What's the frequency and the number of times that they're able to be done? And that's quite simply the basic structure of it that would get written into the PUD agreement.
Yes, I mean, because you don't really track events for a banquet hall that's an allowed use, all right? It's just an allowed use and they have it. The difference isn't a PUD is that there is a little bit of more, I guess, micromanagement or, I don't, that's a bad term, but more in the way of leeway and levity as to what you're allowing on this property, you know, compared to the underlying zoning classification. But I think it would be extremely difficult, you know, if you're, to monitor everything, you know, all across the board as opposed to, you know, setting specific numbers of, are we going to have events? Okay, if we're going to allow, how many are they allowed to have? What are the numbers of people that are allowed at these events? Who cares what they are? What about amplification of any type of sound, music as opposed to announcements or classes or things of that nature? And as one final one, I was thinking of here, I guess the timeline of when it's, when it's cut off as well.
So the example I'm thinking of is across the street, Olson's is a PUD, okay? I couldn't tell you what the exact amount, the details of what's written into that contract, but I can tell you if we started to have issues and problems over there, we can look that information up and see what's approved and see if that's appropriate over there. So when they come back and they want to put something in their outlets, right? We go back and we pull up that PUD approval and then we take a look at, okay, what was approved at that time? Does it need to be amended? Does it fit right in there? How does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
On page one oh seven of your packet from May, it talks about that calendar and items. So one of the items says GOREC staff will maintain a calendar of all scheduled events with the number of expected attendees, hours, name of event, organization, and host. And then a calendar or schedule will be made available to East Bay Township staff for events anticipated to draw more than a hundred guests. And then they talk about events and activities will not be overbooked and will stay within the capacity of the parking spaces and that mid-size events will not be held concurrently with large size events or transient activity permits.
So basically, they're taking the large events and lower and not including the general day use to small class events and the mid-size events and that. Okay, alrighty. All right, so what about, back to the classes and small events? That is listed as the one to thirty guests daily and all year long. Any issues with that? Okay. Mid-size events, thirty to one hundred guests, fifty per year. They can have them, well, they can have them all year or so. And then, oh yeah, frequency fifty per year, sorry about that. Any issues with the mid-size events?
I guess what I keep looking at is the one hundred. I, I don't think there's any issue with thirty to fifty. That can be managed without any big issue. But when hundred is, one hundred is the ending number, you know, I mean, it should be like one to twenty-nine under classes and small events. It should be thirty to ninety-nine for mid-size events.
Sure, sure.
When you're using the same number for both high and low, it, it gets muddled.
Yep, so I think classes are normally, people think about classes as to thirty people. So if small classes and events were one to thirty, then it makes sense that mid-size events would be, say, thirty-one to one hundred. And then your large events would be one oh one to two hundred. I think that's good not to have that overlapping number there. So then mid-size events would be thirty-one to a hundred, fifty a year and all year. That's a good point. Any issue with that? Okay, large sized events would be one oh one to two hundred. They are proposed at twenty per year, all year, and then limiting twelve to weddings. And I believe that there was also, was the no consecutive weekend in this condition as well?
That was one of the conditions that the planning commission.
Yeah. Number nine.
No consecutive weekends, but they conceivably could host a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday large event in the same weekend, three different events? And then, is that possible?
Yeah, and I think I did think of that after the fact. We didn't say one large event on non-consecutive weekends. We just said they couldn't be, a weekend is considered Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So yeah, I, I mean, that's a loophole, I think.
Let me just pose this, if the, if the larger events are capped at two hundred, one hundred and one to two hundred, and they're not serving alcohol and they're not amplified, does it really matter if you have twenty a year or more than twenty a year? What, two hundred people, two hundred people are going to more than be contained on that property. They have sufficient parking, they are buffered by eight hundred and fifty feet. I mean, it just doesn't, what point are you serving with that?
Right, I would agree, because they're not going to have to shuttle people at that point or, or anything. It's all going to be on site.
So what about large events, one hundred and one to two hundred?
Twenty a year regardless of what they are.
Well, like I said, does it, I, I don't even know why you're limited to twenty. I mean, I think at fifty, you know, it, it's fine with the mid-size, you're, they're going to all be contained on that parcel. Yeah, because the amplified music's gone and the alcohol is gone. You know, then use the facility, don't let it sit vacant.
I know, I would still like to see it limited, because we have surrounding neighbors that are going to have to, I know.
But what are they going to hear? I mean, I, I'm sorry, I'm not, I just don't understand what the adverse effect is then, because there's no, I mean, they're all parking on site, there's no shuttling at that point because it's two hundred people.
On the public road to get to the private road. I just, I'm, in my mind, I think it's.
I don't know, it's like, what, five hun, I don't know how many feet it is to their driveway, but.
They're on a main road that are, they're on Hobbs Highway, which is allowed if we, you know, public assembly identifies the main roads. Hobbs Highway is one of those. They are right there at Hobbs Highway. In limiting them, how is it, you know, Ranch Rudolph is right in another township. That's, we're not, you're not saying, well, we don't want to have too many people on the road going to Ranch Rudolph or Hiawenta or, you know, PGOs. I mean, I don't know.
I'm just thinking of the fact that there's only one way in and out. And if all of those two hundred people are coming in separate vehicles every weekend, it, it's going to impact the neighbors. It, it's going to. I, I understand that we're looking to limit the amplification and the alcohol, but that's still a lot of vehicles that will impact. Those folks have no other way to get out. Because they're on one end of Scout Camp or Trigger. They have no other way to get in or out to their property.
And I would, I would concur with you if, if this property were further in Scout Camp Road, but right where they are on the direct access to Hobbs Highway, which is a major road, per the road commission, per our ordinance, I don't know.
I think if their access was on Hobbs Highway, that's a different story, but the access is on Scout. They have to come off of Hobbs Highway to get onto Scout Camp, in which case it impacts anyone that lives beyond them or anyone that would be going to visit those folks that live down there.
Yeah, but there's not much space there. I mean, you just go right on the road and they're right there. There's not even a house there.
It may impact them, but I don't think it's excessive impact. And I don't think that it's unreasonable.
I think twenty times a year is a big enough inconvenience to do it fifty-two weeks a year. There's got to be something different.
We can disagree. It's, you know.
Absolutely, but the discussion can be.
Yeah, right, no, I agree, but I would say that I don't feel that it's an excessive impact.
So maybe we take that to, we're saying every other week, instead of twenty times a year, twenty-six times a year. Fifty-two weeks in a year.
I mean, this, this is my personal opinion. The applicant has come for, you know, asked a lot of, of the board, the planning commission, the township in general to review this. We've taken a long time to get here and we're making some, in my opinion, reasonable concessions with the alcohol and getting rid of the amplified music. I don't know why we would move the needle anymore. They haven't asked for any additional events here. They've asked for twenty, you know, we should.
Well, they haven't weighed in on our conditions so far, so.
That may impact.
Fair enough, yeah.
And that's where I was coming at from, that was, because that's going to impact that, that ability on those types of events that they can have and the, the revenue generated from that to turn around and care for those buildings. Okay, so with large sized events, we're at a hundred and one to two hundred. The frequency we need to determine and it is all year. And then are we distinguishing with weddings or, or not? I mean, I don't know what's distinguishable about the wedding if you don't have amplified sound or alcohol.
I would agree with that.
So we would just take that out. The only thing that stays in is a hundred and sixty-four with tables and chairs. Large sized events, a hundred and one to two hundred, there's twenty per year. Again, I would say if, if you are saying, you know, every other weekend for events, large events should not be allowed on consecutive weekends, then I would just say make that half your weekends in a year, which is twenty-six. But it's regardless, twenty, twenty-six.
I would prefer we stay at twenty.
That's, go ahead.
Just something for you to think about there, because I'm looking at the table, I noticed with Brian there. You know, whether it's a class or otherwise, does that mean when you have a class up to thirty and it's daily, is that ten classes of thirty during the day, depending on which event? Things of, so think about, even if you have a two hundred, is it two hundred one time in a twenty-four hour period during that day? Or is a lunch event of two hundred and a dinner event of two hundred on the same day still acceptable? That's, I just want to make sure that you, you understand that concept, that those are possibilities.
Thank you for making things more complicated, Peter. I really appreciate that.
It's his job, right?
I know, I know, I'm just teasing. All right, so input, input on that from the board? I mean, I would, I would see a class or a small event as a, a classes attending a class, I mean.
Well, and they could have multiple classes a day, because they can have one in the pavilions. They could have one at Bessher Lodge.
Right.
They could.
Only question I have from that is then, so for example, I know, like, the Wilderness First Aid that they have there, I can't remember what, what it is, but say it's a series of like five days and you're there for two, three hours a day. So is that five classes or is that one class?
And I don't know that we can make those, I don't know. It's getting pretty detailed distinctions.
That's what you're saying, right?
Because it's a possibility. And then, you know, you can ask the applicant, but, you know, to me, it'd be logical. If they have an outdoor education class, then they have several during the day. It could be four or five different classes on different topics.
Sure.
They have, you know, several places where you can have, you know, two hundred people in an event. There are like, there's three, three places.
Well, but there's no, we don't really, actually, let me track that back, because if there's a five-day class, we don't really care if that's called one class or five classes, because there's no, there's no limit on it.
Right.
Yeah.
And they can have two hundred, two hundred parking spots or, excuse me. They have parking for, what was it, two sixty-four? If you use every parking campground, Farrow Lodge, everything. So they're limited, if they have a, two medium events and three classes going on, they can only have two hundred and sixty-four cars on the property at one given time.
Right.
At the max.
I just want you to think about.
Yeah.
Could they have it five different times during the same day and do the?
Go ahead, Matt, did you have something?
Well, I, as far as the classes and small events, I mean, they can have, to me, several classes going on at the same time if you have the space for that. When you get to the large events, even though without amplified music, where it's still going to create more of that nuisance and noise than a small event will. And again, they, they haven't asked for anything different than twenty a year. I don't have a problem with changing that to twenty-six or getting rid of the weddings, but it's twenty-five after eleven.
So go ahead, Glenn, Matt? What is your preference on the large sized or mid-sized events? You don't, okay.
Well, just, just noticed this, what's the, what's the two asterisks here? Is there some kind of footnote that I'm missing on the four twenty? It's not code for something?
Yeah, no, I didn't, I couldn't find the two asterisks either.
They can't, they can't have over two hundred now until they expand their septic system.
Okay.
So I think that, I'm just guessing, that's what the asterisks might be.
It goes to four twenty when the septic system is fixed and they don't have any tables and chairs?
Or they could do indoor outdoor.
Where they're just having people stand up and crammed in the spot.
Or it's a typo.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, general day use as listed, classes and small events as listed, mid-size events adjusted to thirty-one to one hundred, and the rest as listed. We're going to take away in the agreement, all of this thing about examples and terminology of them and strip it down to the event. And then large size, we'll put it a hundred and one to two hundred. We'll do, you know, if nobody has any problem, it makes it easy to do. If it's every other week of the year, it's twenty-six events. Do it at twenty-six. Sue has an issue with that? Does anyone else have an issue with that? Okay, so, and then we will have Bessher Lodge with one hundred and sixty-four tables and chairs. Okay?
I, I still, I mean, I'm, I'm going along with this because I don't know that there's a better way, but I'm still just baffled as to how this, this gets, you know, how these numbers get, get somehow enforced. I mean, if, if there's an enforcement issue, I just don't see how, how that plays out.
Well, there's, I mean, and there's lots of PUDs. It's the, like I said, it's the contract written into it. And then if there's a violation of it, that's what you have the contract for.
Understood.
And you have to go back to how many are registered, how many are happening at the same time, that kind of stuff. And you're not going to know that until it happens.
Right.
It could be different every day.
Okay, and so.
Last one, the transient activities.
Well, I don't know that we define transient activity within the PUD agreement. That's a completely different subject, yeah.
Remove this?
Yeah, this isn't our chart, so, just so you know. So we will take that information and, and put that into the, the motion and the, the proposed motion. Correct?
Earlier in the comment, Peter made, he said that could be a, a point to discuss on limiting transient activity permits.
Well, the, the comment was what I had a discussion with Claire, and it's probably something that should be placed in that ordinance to begin with here, is you don't want to have the transient activities ordinance utilized for people to circumvent even a few times a year. Conditions that are imposed, whether it's a PUD, a special use, or a site plan approval condition. And so I think the ordinance should be amended to reflect that. And transient activities are, are meant to be something that's out of the ordinary, not related to the approved land use, all right? Something that's outside of the ordinary is special, not something that commonly occurs on the property. You know, that's, that was my basis for that, so. And the ordinance then will deal with it on its own, because it's a separate police department ordinance, and so there's no reason to have that in there as a condition.
Yeah, so we'll just leave that out, okay? All right, okay, with that, staff, do you feel like you have direction to complete it for the next, to be approved for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I can't even find the agenda, so if somebody has one, throw one at me. Because I have buried mine. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will, oh, there's a typo on this, actually. There's no public comment, so there's a typo. The upcoming meetings are September 19th for the Emergency Services Public Hearing, and then we will look to bring this back to the, likely the October meeting, however, it could be November, but it will be October or November. So with that, we will have the second opportunity for public comment. You are welcome to make your way to the podium and introduce yourself. If you are leaving, please remain quiet and exit quietly so that we can hear the people who are left remaining here. Yes, sir?
I'm Matt Pukowski.
So, sir, you can't talk on the same comment, of the same topic? Okay, very good. Thank you.
I sit back there and shut my mouth and I hear all this stuff and I write notes. And so, the first thing that I guess I would like you to think about is, so if there's 60 boats, and I picked that number because somebody agreed in a lawsuit that that's what it needs to be, not that they couldn't make a decision to change it, and you wash all 60 boats in the same morning, where's all the water go?
Excuse us. This is his public comment? Let him complete it. Thank you.
So I'm just saying, where does all the water go? How much water does it take to clean a boat? So that's just something I don't think anybody's thought about. Does it require a septic system that the water goes into? You know, the one guy talked about-
I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me. Staff, if you're, you are welcome to go home for the evening. Thank you for being here. Continue. Thank you.
If they, he talked about, they didn't bring the cars in because there were Boy Scouts in there. Kids, is what he said. Campgrounds got kids. That was just their reasoning for parking alongside the road. I'm not saying that we should allow parking alongside the road. I'm saying, if that was the real reason, shouldn't we be looking at the campground and the events at the same time, kids within? And then if it's open to the public, is that mean that they can be, do, play a disc golf and hiking and all of this stuff, all at the same time? That's all kids coming in there. And from what I saw, they can damn near park anywhere they want. And so, it just, this whole thing didn't have to be like this. There were two major projects just talked about within the ticker. One of them was the trail. How many people bought into it, how many meetings they had, and how successful it came. They didn't have a meeting. They didn't ask for anybody to come and sit down and discuss this stuff with them. And then they talk about the new plans for on-site the river. There's been four plans created. There's been public meetings happened. None of that stuff happened. They put it all on you guys, and they're wrong.
Next.
Just wait a minute until he gets it fixed. No.
My name is Marie Biffes.
You can lower that if you like. Well, I think you can. Okay, go ahead. Yeah.
My name is Marie Biffes. I'm at 435 Hobbs. I've got a couple of things to say about the historical use. The Boy Scouts' historical use was in its heyday in the 70s, 80s, and 90s. It started to cut off in the 10s, in the 80s, in the 10s. Totally different environment when the Scouts were there eight days. There weren't that many houses. I was born here. I grew up here. I've been here since 1968. It's a completely different zone than it was when I was a kid. I felt safe riding my bike on Hobbs Highway. I wouldn't let any kid ride their bike on Hobbs Highway today. So the historical use that they came to you guys with, with the 500 and the 700, it was a completely different, right? And they did have them parked along the road, and they did consume space that they shouldn't have. But there wasn't as much daily traffic from all of the new houses that had been built since that time. That's my first point. The second point is, the easiest decision is to allow the day use, allow the classes, and cut out the events. Just period. Cut them. They don't need them. They haven't proven that they need them to keep their staff. They haven't shown you their budget. They haven't shown you what they're going to make. And Gorrick can cover some of the cost. They're not paying you taxes. They're making tons of money. They're the richest brewery in the world. They've said that. And then the third point is, if you do allow the events, you're putting the compliance on all of us. And don't think that we won't do it. Because I'm pissed, I live on Hobbs. I'm not hearing the noise as much as they are. I'm seeing the traffic, right, that's going by. And I can't cross the street to go down to my mom's because it's a dangerous corner that I live on, and it's just a pain. You guys are going to allow those 200 events, they're going to have cars, they're going to have more cars. The two transients that you allowed, the two weddings that you did allow, I noticed the traffic increase. So just so you guys understand, think about that. The easiest thing is to cut out the events and just be done with.
Thank you. Next.
1330 camps. I agree with a lot of what she said. We've been there since 1967, and you can say this about the Boy Scouts. The Boy Scouts were kids, eight or 10, per adult. So you have eight or 10 kids per adult when they're on the lake or when they're in the camp. They have one bonfire. They are not out on the lake, they are not running up and down the road, 200 people running up and down the road, or 60 kayaks out on the, on the lake, unsupervised. It is not the same. So, I appreciate, the people that live on Hobbs are going to have a lot of traffic. I feel bad for them. I appreciate that you guys have a hard decision to make, but it is not the same as the Boy Scouts. Even 200, if they had 200 on a weekend when they changed, they didn't come, 200 parents weren't there every single weekend. You know darn well those kids got bussed in. You know that those parents did not, each parent did not drive there. So I would just really like you to consider the 200 events, the 200 people events. It's too much for our lake. It's too much for our neighborhood. Drive Hobbs Highway. Come out and drive it a few times, especially driving in the winter. If you want to let them have a event every other weekend on Hobbs in the winter, I will guarantee you that there's going to be a lot more accidents. And I feel really bad for the enforcement man, because you know darn well we're all calling. Thank you.
Next. Thank you.
Lisa Farland, again, 5832, Rennie View. I just, first of all, I wanted to say thank you, because we appreciate all of your work. Whether we agree or not, we appreciate your work, so I wanted to say that. But I wanted to also address a point that was made by Mr. Cook, which was about how if we have, if we set these boundaries in this criteria, how would it be enforced, or how would it be monitored or managed? And I know that your reply was, well, that's not really our job. That, you know, it'll be in the pot. If there's a complaint, someone will deal with that. We'll investigate it. But the bottom line is, by then, it's already happening. And you already have all the residents and the people in the surrounding areas that are asking you to please create something that could be managed and enforced and accountable, other than, poor Preston. It's not realistic. I feel like as a board, you need to be realistic with the staff that you have and the freedoms that you're about to provide and having no black and white plan for us residents, like, what do we do? What do we do? We call the police, we call Preston. It's just not realistic. So please, consider the overall number, which you're kind of peeling that banana right now. You're like, well, wait a minute. There can be three in a weekend? Then we have the campers and the day visits and the classes. How many people really is that on your 500 acres? Because 500 acres sounds like a lot, but when you have hundreds and hundreds of people and cars and children and singing and partying, you know, things are going to go awry. So please consider that. I think you're on the right track. Please stay on that track. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
Hello, thank you for all of the deliberation and diving in. I'm really happy about this. I'm not happy about all the results, but I am happy to see you guys really trying to dig in. So thank you for all that. Are we going to be allowed to send you information so I don't have to stand here and talk about all my notes?
You can always send a BOT email.
Okay. Then I'll just make a couple of quick comments. The historical use of the Boy Scouts, that's all great, but I do think that that was all about youth camping, and it doesn't have anything to do with day use. All those things were fantastic, but they had a youth camping license. You know, even, even people here in this room have testified almost at nauseam about how ruckus the noise could get in Besser Hall. So, I think that's just youth camping. All those events were youth camping, so I don't, I don't know how that's even relevant. So, it was a wonderful trip down, down Memory Lane, but doesn't really, doesn't really matter, I don't think. So, that was fun. As far as enforcement, I really, I sent you all that enforcement letter that Mr. Wendling sent to Preston. Lucky Preston, he doesn't work Friday through Sunday, so he doesn't have to worry about enforcement on weekends. Please take a look at that, the principles to evidence and as far as enforcing. It's a Rubik's Cube, and there are a lot of complaints from Lake More. Maybe call the owners of Lake More and see if they'll tell you about those and put those in writing. And excuse my outburst, but somebody has to make that point. Call them. Call the people that are complaining about Lake More that aren't getting enforcement. And please look into that. It can't happen. It can't happen. And you had five community groups sign a letter to you. That's almost impossible to happen, almost as impossible enforcement as the enforcement. Five community groups are so fearful about it. We've already witnessed it. It's already happening out here in Forest Lakes. We're not making this up. Please consider it. Perhaps you should design an enforcement plan that guarantees that you can enforce it before you make these considerations. Cart before the horse, horse before the cart. Maybe you should guarantee enforcement before you cause more problems. Not saying you're causing the problems. I don't want to misspeak. That's not what I'm, hopefully you understand what I'm trying to say. Other than that, I think that I can send you the rest of my comments, and have a good night. It's late.
Thank you. Next.
Again, Ralph Benner's 1380 Autumn Trail on Rennie Lake. Thank you very much for all you're doing, all you're listening to. You've been at this for months, between the planning commission and you. I was encouraged to hear the discussion and opening up about the boats tonight. It seemed to me over the time period, that's been kind of dismissed. And Mr. Wendling steps up here and says, well, that's not an issue because of the non-conforming boat uses. Well, that happened. It happened when the rules of appeal changed without anybody being noticed, notified. And it just appeared. And I, we've asked you before to rescind that non-conform use regarding the boats, because it was ambiguous. You heard, you heard comments tonight about the number of boats when the Boy Scouts were here. You heard comments that those boats were only used on-site. And now we're talking about public boats being put on a lake that does not have a developed public boat launch. And that's going to carry invasive species. And I've talked about that for many months. And that's going to be on all of us. And that's going to be a large cost for all of us. So thank you again for listening to all my comments over the months, and I hope you take them to heart. And I hope we don't see the tragedy of the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Dana Cowell, Shumsky Road, 2506 Shumsky Road. First off, I have two Eagle Scouts. I spent a lot of time at Camp Graylick. Taught the fly fishing merit badge. It was a beautiful one. I know what that camp is like. And to compare what happened when Boy Scouts were there to what you're thinking about with events, apples and oranges, it'd be like saying Max Landing versus Lake More. Enough said. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Have a good evening. All right, no, yeah, we're all way too tired for that. Come on up. Thank you.
Carol Kusel, East Bay Township, resident. Thank you, like everyone else is saying, for your thoughtful listening and discussion. Perhaps one of the things you should consider before you meet again is a total daily cap. You've really gone through and minced all of the different events, the classes, the medium-sized events, the large events, the transient events. But what about a total daily cap? Any mix, there are certain little lines that are in there that are hard to remember and figure all out, but it certainly seems like the classes, there could be any number of them, even if it's capped at 30 per class. There could be any number of class. And if you, and then that could be mixed with the campers, and what's the total on that? And that can be mixed with something else and something else. And in addition to that, another loophole was found recently in that Gorrick allowed groups of people to move through, run through their property, but not, but that's not counted. That's like, well, that's not our event. Some other, it started at some other place, it ended at some other place, but yet they went through the property and went through, apparently, Scout Camp Road. So, thank you for mincing all of that, but they still can go, sorry, the number can just expand with all these different loopholes in it. So please, look again carefully at it and consider a total daily cap, a total daily cap of any people, any bodies on that property.
Thank you. Next.
Casey Cowell, Shumsky Road. Also, thank you for seeing this through. It was difficult. Would you please, before we're done, clarify what the, where we stand, where you stand, and what the next steps are? I didn't quite understand it. I think we have to clarify language in some ways.
Sure, I can follow up with you. You might have not heard it.
I didn't.
Okay. That is just that I've, staff is, their directive on how to update the findings, and that will be brought back during the October or November board meeting.
Got it. So it's table till then?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Next. Thank you. Okay, saying no further, saying no further comment?
I'll make a brief, Brandon Flinsky, our beauty of Slade. I want to echo some of the comments. I really appreciate the thoughtful discussion and really digging into the issues. It's quite obvious to those of us in the audience, those that are trying to find a solution, and those that have already found a solution. And to that end, the discussion surrounded around enforcement. I mean, put yourselves in the shoes of Preston Taylor, who, to the best of my knowledge, doesn't have a boat that can get out on the water and count whether there's 59 on the water and one somewhere in the 500 acres of the parcel. You know, it's just, it's unrealistic to think that this will be enforced and managed. So, to a certain extent, it's mincing words to say, we can have an event this big with this many people. Are they a guest? Are they a camper? Well, you probably won't know unless they're wearing a wedding gown or a tux, whether or not they're there, for what type of event. And it's just incredibly frustrating. I know you're all tired. We're all tired too. We're tired of paying taxes. We're tired of paying lawyers to try and fight these things and bring it to the attention of people that are listening. And as I said, it's very clear, those of you that are listening and are trying to uphold the ordinances, and we appreciate you very, very dearly. We wish some of the rest of you would come to that side. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Okay, saying no further comment, we stand adjourned unless there's any objection.